...of our morning activities for the ARPA funds. That's why we're coming on a few moments late. Next item is updates for wildfire mitigation amendments, Senate Bill 762.
Awesome. Good afternoon, Commissioners. For the record, Kyle Collins, Associate Planner, Community Development Department. We're actually going to be talking about two pieces of state legislation at the same time. We'll try to bracket them into two separate conversations as much as possible, but there's so much overlap between the two and one influencing the other that we thought it made sense to sort of combine them as much as we could, so.
Referring to what two?
391.
Senate Bill 762, the wildfire mitigation piece, and then 391.
Okay, so the next two agenda items is two, just acknowledging that, okay.
So, as we called out, we're talking about two Senate bills here today. Two deals with wildfire mitigation across the state and Senate Bill 391 deals with rural accessory dwelling units throughout the state. Tanya is going to be talking primarily about Senate Bill 391 and I'll be covering Senate Bill 762. They're both passed in June of this year by the Senate and the components of 391 are dependent on provisions in Senate Bill 762 and they have built-in timelines associated with these wildfire mitigation pieces that have to occur at the state level really before any action can occur at local levels. And I'll walk through some of those major pieces in the presentation. Like I said, we're going to be talking about both bills here together. So Senate Bill 762 deals in a whole suite of wildfire mitigation actions, some of which have to do with public health commitments for smoke impacts, some of them have to do with fencing projects on state and federal lands. It's really a comprehensive piece of a bill, but we're just going to be talking about three components of it that are mostly related to CDD's work and those have to do with the statewide wildfire risk mapping, statewide defensible space standards, and then finally statewide building codes for any new and existing residential development. So the first piece of 762 that's important is a statewide risk map associated with wildfire. So the Oregon Department of Forestry and consultation with Oregon State University at some point over the coming months is going to come up with a comprehensive map that covers every property in the entire state. Through that map, it's going to identify two main characteristics. One is a risk classification going from no risk up through extreme risk. And the second piece that it's going to identify are what are called wildland urban interfaces. The definition of what a wildland urban interface is hasn't been developed yet. That's actually another piece that comes out of 762. And the State Board of Forestry over the coming weeks and months is actually going to hold an administrative rulemaking session to identify what a wildland urban interface is before placing those identified areas into the map. It's not clear exactly what those mapping designations are going to reveal for Deschutes County. Obviously, they haven't made the maps yet, but doing a little bit of intuitive guesswork here, knowing what's occurring around us at this present time, seems pretty likely that a very large chunk of our county is probably going to fall within high or extreme risk based on the statewide map. That may not be the case. There will be an appeals process associated with individual properties if owners believe that they were incorrectly designated, but that's kind of what we believe is likely to happen moving forward. So properties which fall into either high or extreme risk and also fall within a designated wildland urban interface are required to meet brand-new regulations, specifically defensible space regulations and new building code regulations for any existing or new development that occurs. I'll kind of break down what those mean. So the new building code regulations in particular are based on R-327 of the Oregon Residential Specialty Code. I think the Board might be somewhat familiar with this from our conversations back in February. We were talking about possibly adopting this at a local level. So that set of rules will be adopted statewide with some amendments and tweaks that are not currently listed in R-327. So specifically, it calls out things like fire-resistant building materials, siding, roofing, ventilation standards. Those things are required not only for new development, but with a set of proposed amendments to R-327, it'll apply to all existing development when exterior structures are replaced and any replacement, obviously, of a building outright. The Department of Consumer and Business Services has to include those amendments that I just referenced at some point over the coming months, and that's really just to pull in things that were left out originally of R-327 which deal with existing structures. So as the Board might remember, there were a set of built-in exemptions originally included with R-327. Two of the big ones were if there were subdivisions, more than 50% built out that had structures not built to R-327 standards. Any development in those areas moving forward would be exempted from those requirements. It's not clear, once these amendments are made at a state level, if that same exemption will apply. And the other big piece of R-327 that was originally included was a broad latitude given to local governments to carve out their own exception or exemption process. I know back in February, we talked about possibly including exemptions for properties above a certain size, maybe. That was one possible option, or certain zoning designations. It doesn't seem clear that that will or will not be included in these amendments moving forward. It specifically does, 762 does call out, again, if you're within one of these extreme or high-risk classes and you're in the urban interface, it seems to suggest that regardless of what local governments may believe, they're going to have to meet these new requirements moving forward. But again, we'll have to wait to see what the state process shakes out before we know for certain. It's not clear when us as a local government will need to amend our local building codes to include these new R-327 standards. There's a state process where they have to amend the codes and then adopt it at a state level and then ultimately it's disseminated out to local governments. So it's kind of a three-step process and it's not entirely clear when we'll get to that third step in the process when we have to adopt something at the Deschutes County The second big regulatory piece of this is new defensible space requirements, as I stated. It directs the state fire marshal to come up with minimum defensible space requirements.
Let's talk about, just half a step back. So that 327, we did go through this quite a bit and it doesn't seem to be that big of a step from new construction techniques. So there are definitely going to be some, you know, byproducts of redevelopment or whatever might happen, but as I say, my conclusion of seeing new construction today in the rural county, I don't think that's too far of a step. So my point is, the R-327, you know, hopefully that'll just kind of land itself and be the standards. And now we're getting into the next step, which could be the interesting one, I think. So it'll be interesting to see.
I mean, I think we saw in the advisory process locally here that there was a desire to really narrow the area where the R-327 codes were going to be required when we were looking at it at just the local level. So I would agree that the R-327 building codes aren't a huge step from where we're at right now, but there is a perception that it's, that the sky is falling of some people.
Well, yeah, so the state's, it sounds like it's common and not much of a debate anymore. So I'm just acknowledging that, so now we're stepping into the next concepts of a defensible space.
My house was built 16 years ago and I have that hard siding because I thought it was wood and I tried to hammer into it and I went, oh, gosh. So 16 years ago, and what we were hearing from builders is that they were actually, they've been incorporating these standards here for a long time. And, you know, I always talk about screening and how critical it is, don't, you know, even if you have a really old house, get your screening changed. So I feel like people know here, you've got to use really the best, the safest materials.
Agreed, yeah. I think this is, of the two big regulatory pieces, the building codes piece is probably a little bit more streamlined. The defensible space piece, because there's not precedent for it in a lot of senses, is a little harder to wrap your brain around. So speaking of defensible space, as I was stating earlier, it, 762 calls for the state fire marshal to come up with a set of minimum standards. They're going to do that in consultation with the Oregon Fire Code Advisory Board and it has to meet certain international standards that are called out by the International Code Council. So this is not something that's being drafted from the ground up. Really, there's a set of international standards related to wildland urban development and our state regulations ultimately will be based on those with some minor tailoring for Oregon-specific climate topography, all of those types of things. But the basic idea is 762 requires the fire marshal to create a set of minimum standards and to set sort of a ceiling of maximum standards based in this international code requirement. So ultimately, the fire marshal is going to be tasked with the majority of the enforcement and monitoring work associated with defensible space, but 762 does call out that local governments can take control of defensible space monitoring enforcement moving forward if they so choose. It provides a set of kind of technical advice as well as some financial assistance at some point in the future if local governments want to take this on to actually handle the administration piece. And specifically, I think they're thinking of local fire districts, fire protection districts, or fire agencies to actually be the enforcers and maintainers of this if local governments decide to take this on. But ultimately, even if local governments take on the administration piece, they still have to report back to the state fire marshal on either an annual or a biannual basis is what it seems like the bill is going to ultimately lean towards. So the kind of last piece outside of those regulatory instances associated with 762 relates to a wildfire programs advisory council. There's going to be, the governor's going to appoint a wildlands program advisory director who will actually oversee all the components associated with 762. So everything that I've talked about today, the mitigation requirements for building up through the creation of a conservation corps, that's another part of 762 that I think someone will inform the Board about moving forward. But ultimately, that director will be guided by a 19-member advisory panel. It's not a decision-making body, it's just intended to provide expertise and perspective for the director who ultimately makes the decisions. But local governments do have the opportunity to nominate persons to serve on that advisory council. And specifically, there are two items or persons that have to be nominated from local governments that the Board may want to consider calling out someone from Deschutes County in the next several months if they choose to move in that path. The first is someone who directly represents county government, that one's pretty obvious. And then the second piece is a member who is specifically tied to land use planning, a land use planning director of a county that's associated with the wildland urban interface. Again, we don't know what the results of that mapping process are going to be, but I think we can safely assume that a pretty big chunk of Deschutes County is going to fall into this designation. As I said, the Board can come up with other persons that they might want to nominate. There are a few other items, but most of them relate to fire protection districts, some design expertise, things of that nature, representatives of building committees. So this is a timeline of actions that have to happen at the state level? That's, oh, go ahead.
Before we leave off the discussion of the advisory committee, I just wanted to share a little bit of information that I learned recently. So I'm actually much more interested in the rulemaking advisory committees than the overall wildfire advisory committee. So I called ODF and tried to get a little bit more information about that. One thing that I learned that might be of interest to everyone is that next week, I believe it's July 20th, they're going to have an open house on those rules advisory committees and that, you know, those are basically the processes where they do the risk classification, you know, where they'll do the risk classification and do the wooey mapping. I mean, not real time during that meeting, but that's the kickoff meeting for those processes and they'll happen very, you know, as you'll see in the timeline very quickly. But one of the things I thought was very interesting about that, so I spoke with an old colleague at ODF who's going to be, you know, kind of coordinating those two committees, and he said, "Well, the county contact for us for these processes," and I don't know if that's for the advisory committee council as well, but definitely for these rules committees, he said, "Well, the county contact for us is Mark Bennett from Union County." He said, "You know, I've been around AOC a little bit now and I haven't really seen Mark Bennett participate in the natural resource committee or other committees and like..." So I, you know, I wanted to put that out to my colleagues. If ODF is operating under the assumption that, you know, a specific county commissioner is, you know, their liaison for this kind of stuff, and it's not clear to me how that determination was made from AOC. I was hoping if any of you knew anything about that, if you could share. But also, if we want Deschutes County to have more influence in these processes, then, you know, we actually may need to raise the question at AOC or with ODF.
Mark Bennett's actually from Baker County.
Baker County, sorry. But is there...
Yeah, no, I don't know of any actions or information about how that selection would have happened, so I haven't heard anything.
Has he, I mean, is he a committee leader or anything like that at AOC?
He's really thoughtful. I've heard him on different issues. A very thoughtful, insightful person from my experiences with him and also perhaps the back to...
So, yeah, he's been involved in different state levels, so I don't know of how official or anything about AOC. You know, AOC might have not been involved, you know, he might have just been in the right place at the right time to drop his name in and it may not even have been anything to do with AOC, but I don't know that. So I would support bringing it up, you know, I mean, Deschutes County is, we're probably the poster child for everything in this bill, so, yeah, we should be involved very...
Yeah, I mean, you think about a lot of eastern Oregon counties, they got a lot of fire risk, but they don't necessarily have a lot of wooey. You know, a place like Grant County, it's, you know, there's a lot of fire risk, but, you know, even Crete County, you know, like the fire risk in the forests, it's pretty far removed from prime bill. While we've got communities that immediately, you know, like blend right in, you know, gradient right into the forest and have substantial amounts of wooey, so I, you know...
We might have more, but Grant County had the Canyon Fire, which was incredibly significant, so.
Absolutely. No, and I'm not saying that there wasn't...
They had a lot of homes that burned up in that fire. It was horrible for them.
Well, and the definition of wildland urban interface, we might really want to get engaged with that because that's one of those things, just like a managed camp, oh, okay, well, what does that mean?
What do you say?
You know, and in fact, a couple of slides ago, the bullet point said something about a county that is wildland urban interface, and I think of it as a strip around Ben Redmond Sisters in Lepine, an urban city and the forest outside of it, but man, the definition could go all over the place.
You know, I think like a whole bunch of people living out in Spring River, that's a wildland urban interface too, you know, and, you know, there's a lot of...
Well, yeah, so that's...
There are a lot of residences out in rural Deschutes County.
So it's terminology, you know, in the state of Oregon, if a city is an urban growth boundary and it has a footprint, that's an urban area. But if the definition of a wildland urban interface is where there's a house and trees, that's different, you know, so it's terminology.
Yeah, yeah, no, and there's actually a long history of the use of the phrase wildland urban interface for guiding, you know, it's actually a prioritization system for guiding where fuels reduction money goes. So, I mean, you know, historically, being in the wildland urban interface was desirable, you know, and so, you know, like in, you know, 10, 15, 20 years ago, 10, 15, 20 years ago, Deschutes County was like, "Oh, yeah, our whole county is wildland urban interface." They wanted, they wanted it to be.
Yeah, so it's just terminology.
So it'll be, it will be really interesting to see, you know, kind of if this is seen as regulatory or restrictive, whether, you know, whether people will be really eager to diminish, you know, narrow what wildland urban interface means.
Yeah, just the clear definition of what, when those words are said, what does that mean?
And don't forget Squaw Creek Estates and the fact that they've been in danger from the Grandview Fire. All those homes, you know, one of our six non-prime resource spots that we have been battling for for the last couple of years. So, yeah, they have a lot of homes in there in the middle and not a real good access in and out, so.
Absolutely. Yeah, and as Commissioner Chang pointed out, there is an information session on the 20th with ODF, so next Tuesday. And the big things that they're going to talk about there is the input process for any, really anyone that wants to submit comments on the rulemaking process for how to define wildland urban interface. So we'll get some more clarity about that next week and as well as, we're kind of assuming some of the details about what the appeals process might be for the mapping and some of the more technical details and how risk classifications might be applied. I think those are the big pieces that are going to come up and the Board obviously has an opportunity to provide some comments in that.
So, yeah, just to, you know, I guess the upshot of that is I'm tracking pretty closely how those rulemaking advisory committees are going to work on those maps and if we want to actually have any kind of formal, more formal role or standing in those processes, we should put our hand up.
I think the answer is yes. I mean, so whatever hand up looks like, we'll write a letter or something.
Yeah, yeah. I'll, yeah, I'll let you know what else I find.
Yeah, okay.
What time is it on Tuesday?
I believe it starts at 10:00 AM.
10:00 AM?
Yeah.
Okay.
So all back to our timeline with 762. These are some of the big state-level actions that'll have to happen really before this starts to hit the ground running. So obviously, in June, the bill was passed. The first really big step here, other than some of the administrative rulemaking, which is actually upcoming likely in the next couple of months, is in September of this year, which is when the first members of that advisory committee are ultimately going to be appointed. So if nominations are kind of ruminating in the Board's head or they want to discuss with other members of staff, that's really the deadline, I think, at which point that first set of this council is going to be put together. The next big milestone is in June of next year, which is the deadline that the Department of Forestry has to publish the statewide risk map. So by that point in time, we'll have had the definition of wildland urban interface formally adopted and we should see a parcel-by-parcel basis statewide in a published map that shows risk classifications and wherever that interface happens to fall, both for Deschutes County and everywhere. The next big milestone is in October of next year, which is the Department of Land Conservation and Development will ultimately draft some updates to our statewide land use program that deals with wildfire mitigation, so bringing in how the risk maps are created and how local governments might adopt that. And then ultimately, that information will be disseminated out to local governments to do with. The Department of Consumer and Business Services by that same date has to draft the amendments for R-327 specifically to bring in requirements for existing dwellings and additions to existing dwellings. So that's the kind of drop-dead date when they have to make those amendments to R-327. And then moving even further into the future, by December of next year, the fire marshal has to establish the first suite of minimum defensible space requirements. So it's possible, again, this will all happen before all of that, but that's really the last date that they have to put the final pieces on that regulatory portion. And then by April of 2023, that's the earliest date that newly adopted portions of R-327 can come into play. So while they're crafting all these amendments and then ultimately adopting those amendments into the state building code, April of 2023 is the first point at which it can be applied for any new development that occurs. And then by October of 2024, the Department of Consumer and Business Services again actually has to update R-327 into the state building code. So even though technically there's a point in which the building code might be adopted and can come into play a few months before that, that October of 2024 date is the last possible time that changes to the state building code can be adopted and implemented. It's a little bit confusing because there's a lot of overlapping pieces between amendments and adoption at the state level and then adoption at the local level.
So Kyle, are you saying then that it's till 2023 that we're going to be able to do something?
So 2023 is the first date that any new building code regulations associated with R-327 can be put in place at all, but there's a slightly later date that says any of these amendments that need to be adopted at a state level, they technically have until that date. So it's possible it could actually even go out to 2024 at, let's say, worst-case scenario, the amendments take a very long time to draft, takes a long time to get through the adoption process and then ultimately adopted at the local level. That's kind of like the last possible stop on the train. But 2023 is, I think, their optimistic estimate of when these things should be able to be put in place and controlled.
So then, yeah, the topic is going to be accessory dwelling units. Is there a hard dependency in there?
Well, we will come around with that. So as I've pointed out, there's a pretty significant number of actions that have to occur with a variety of state agencies, really before any action at all can occur at a local level at this point. We're kind of in a holding pattern and a wait-and-see pattern, obviously outside of some of these comments on the Administrative Rulemaking Committee as well as the Advisory Committee. Those are things that are coming up in the near term. So I've tried to list some of the, what I think are the three main actions that the Board should start considering that occur over the next roughly three to six months that have an effect associated with 762. The first is potentially nominating someone to serve on that advisory council, as we discussed a few times. The second is any conversations that the Board might want to have with our local fire protection districts, for example, if they are considering taking over local administration of the defensible space standards. I know there's a lot of unanswered questions, how much money might local governments get to administrate this? How much technical advice do they get? Those are all kind of pending questions, but just something to put in the Board's head to consider over the next couple of months. And then the last piece, as we've discussed a few times, is actually commenting on those administrative rules, the definition of what a wildland urban interface really being the primary one. I've called out here the July 20th date, that's the first information session that we have from ODF, and so hopefully by next Tuesday, we'll have a little bit more clear information on both how to comment and what the process is going to look like for adoption of those rules over the next couple of months.
Are you going to be at that session next Tuesday?
I will actually be on vacation, but I know at least several members of our staff are going to be tuning in and it'll be recorded so the Board can watch it at some point afterwards.
I got it on my calendar as well.
Just making sure they're all following this topic, yeah.
So one of my thoughts was that Deschutes County would have pre-approved plans for people that could do this. They could just walk in and say, "Hey, I want to build a 900-square-foot ADU. I hear you have plans and they're pre-approved." You know, making it as simple as possible, but at what point in time can we do something like that to really help the community? I know that Hayden Homes has a whole division for ADUs, you know, they've been building them in cities. And, you know, with these kind of 2024, are we going to have to wait till 2024?
I can't say one way or the other. It's difficult to know. I mean, the way, there's some unanswered questions between how the bills relate, for example. I know we have some questions to DLCD staff and how they relate. Everyone's kind of learning as we go here. 762 seems to suggest, though, that if you're going to build in any of these areas that require these building codes, you'll have to wait until the codes themselves are actually drafted with the amendments and then ultimately adopted before you can move forward with building them in any form or fashion. So if you're not talking about ADUs, for example, it doesn't apply if you're just building a new dwelling, but it's not entirely clear if 391 is going to require specifically these R-327 standards just for the building codes. And do you have to wait until that full suite of building code amendments are adopted and ultimately disseminated to local governments before you can even start that process? Or is there some streamlined way to move forward? I just don't think we know at this point.
If people who want to build homes or accessory dwelling units will opt into the 327 building codes even before they're required, I mean, is that, is there...
That's a great question and again, I don't know, because we don't know what the final form that R-327 will take, it's difficult to say exactly what that would even mean. There may be standards, for example, as I referenced, it's not clear if some of the exemptions will apply in this new realm of R-327. And so if you're saying, "I agree to abide by all of these," am I allowed to move forward? It's possible they will be able to, but we just don't know.
I thought the code itself was like, I mean, we already have it and I guess that there's an opportunity for them to revise it through this process, but...
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
With that, though, those are really the big, high-level updates from 762. I know the Board's been asking me questions kind of as we go, but before we move on to 391 piece, are there any other lingering pieces that I can help answer? I know Ed Keith is on the line as well, if you have any more technical, how we interface with ODF, for example, he might be able to answer those questions as well, but...
I mean, I do want to ask, so I asked specifically about the rulemaking advisory committees, but for that wildfire advisory council, do we... committees, but for that wildfire advisory council, do we, do we want to, you know, get some clear information from AOC about how, how counties will be represented in those processes? Or are we just, you know?
Well, so I'd like to learn about the whole process, as in, is it, is it a rulemaking subcommittee that votes on things? Or, or, you know, how does, I don't even know how that decision process works, you know, because Mark Bennett could have invited himself to the table. They say, oh yeah, Mark Bennett's at the table, but what table, what is that table? I don't know, you know? So let's learn about it, though. I mean, because if there's a, you know, a 3-2 balance of some kind of interests there, that'd be interesting to know. Or if it's just hopefully come one, come all good ideas, let's, you know, protect the community. So yeah, learn about the rulemaking process. Could you help with that?
What about the advisory council? I mean, do we want to learn more about that or? Personally, I, I, I think that the action is going to be at the, at the rulemaking advisory committee level, but that's just my, that's just my.
Well, no, that's going to, that's where it's going to be interesting. And that's where we're going to know if we're a couple of years out, or if there's going to be a hard time landing this thing, or if, if everybody's just ready to, you know, get on board. It's going to be an interesting place because then that other advisory council is the long-term feedback loop, but.
Well, I find it fascinating that really most of, I think Deshutes County is going to be, what, in extreme and high. I remember like the Burgess Road numbers weren't so bad down there. I was really surprised in Le Pine. Their numbers were a little bit lower. Yeah, it's like, do you just go ahead and say, well, we're all extreme and then go from there? Is there any way to like?
Which we kind of did.
Yeah, yeah. Like we are extreme here, we recognize that, we're going to go with, with the R 327 and that's, you know.
Well, it's defensible space standards.
Yes.
Remember, I think it's going to boil down to defensible space, just like the slide says, you know, the, the, the fire district that implements the program, whatever the program is. And it's either walking around giving suggestions about what's good policy and practices, or handing out tickets for not trimming up the trees high enough, you know? I mean, there's going to be two paths that this could go down.
So you look at this, that's three years from now.
I, I think those are all, all great questions, all things that we as staff have talked about. I mean, if we, if you take the, the path of assuming that we are going to fall into these high and extreme and trying to move forward, kind of on our own path, but still meeting whatever the state standards are, that may be an option. I don't know that we have a clear sense of direction one way or the other, if we can kind of jump the gun, or if we really do have to wait. It seems as if we are probably going to have to wait at the very least for the mapping portion before we're drafting any rules. And that obviously influences how you adopt R 327, particularly given that there's an appeals process. So even though we have our, our own countywide wildfire hazard map, this as a state designation, there may be a litany of property owners in Deshutes County that say, I don't agree that my property is higher extreme, and they have the ability to appeal that designation, and it's not even clear how long that would take. And so there's quite a bit of steps and, and behind the scenes work that has to go down, it seems like, before we can get to a point in the ground. But some of these are, are great questions that we just don't know the answers to.
And these, these were all the arguments why we, we didn't do anything in February, you know, because we could have, we could have actually moved forward and adopted, you know, the R 327 building codes and, and done some of those things at that time. But, but then we'd have to revise all that when the state program came into play, so.
Well, with that, I will pass it over to Tanya, unless there are any other questions to talk about ADUs.
One, one unrelated thing I will say about SB 762 is it also creates a landscape scale restoration program. And they put 21, the state put $21 million in there. So they're going to be looking for large landscapes where a lot of fuels reduction work needs to be done across, you know, public and private land ownerships. And I can't think of any part of the state that is better set up to secure some of those projects than, than we are. So Ed and I have talked about this a little bit already, but that's another thing that, you know, unrelated to the land use discussions we're having right here, right now, I just wanted to flag for, for the other commissioners that, that we should be working on as well.
With that, I'll continue on to the next head of this beast that we are all trying to wrangle here. For the record, Tanya Saltzman, Senior Planner. I'm going to speak about Senate Bill 391, rural ADUs. I apologize if I'm looking to the side, I can't see that far to see that screen, so I'm not being rude. The memo that I provided to you goes into a great amount of detail about kind of each clause of Senate Bill 391, which is also included, and kind of what each clause means or what we think it means, and what potential actions may or may not be necessary, or decision points, that type of thing. My intent in this presentation is to not drill down to that level of detail. I just want the commissioners to have that. But we're just going to kind of go over the, the general concepts and some sort of flags to look at and to identify items that staff can return to the board and discuss further in, in more detail. Otherwise, we would have a 60 slide presentation for you. So with that, the way we see, okay. The way we see the, the criteria, first of all, the rural ADU bill permits counties to allow people in rural residential zones to build one accessory dwelling unit, subject to certain criteria. Those criteria, the way we see it kind of fall into two, two buckets. One is typical development criteria, the kind of things that community development deals with every day, setbacks, sizes, things like that. And then the other chunk is wildfire, which Kyle has summarized very nicely. So those, those are two components. A lot of the, the wildfire stuff has already been addressed, so I'm going to just go over the high level criteria to, to look at and to be returned to later. So some of these things are dependent on those very same timelines that Kyle just alluded to, and then some are separate from that. There's also some procedural options, and that would presumably come a little bit later in the process to determine exactly how the board wants to administer this code if they choose to, to allow rural ADUs. So the basic eligibility criteria, rural, rural residential zones, which is RR 10, MUA, SR 2 and 1/2, and UAR 10. Parcel has to be two acres or more in size. There should be one single family dwelling already located on that lot or parcel. And it can't be in a designated area of critical state concern. I placed a map on the podium for each of you that illustrate our first pass at this. And this is, again, the very first pass, this is that, just that initial criteria. It's not drilling down into any of the other stuff, so just getting the, the broad, broad universe. And we came to 7,798 properties are currently, meet those basic criteria. There's another 149 building permits in progress right now, so presumably those will become eligible as well. So that brings us to 7,947. And I will say, there's a caveat to this. There's been another number mentioned, a much larger number, about 9,800.
Yeah, the 9,800.
That's because, that was a number that we believe took into account vacant land as well. So there's not, so while yes, it will be eligible, but it's not yet eligible at this time because they do need to have a single family dwelling present to start initiating this code. So the realistic number, the, the kind of more immediate number is this smaller number, but eventually presumably if there is a single family dwelling built on those vacant lands, then they will also be eligible. But, you know, today, or whenever this is enacted at the county level, that, it's that lower number, that 7, 790, 79.
And then we could actually talk about, there are a few illegal ones in the county that perhaps now will at some point in time become legal.
There could be a potential conversion process. Yeah, we did not go there with this first preliminary analysis, but that is a, a potential as well, for sure, for sure. So just a highlight of selected development criteria, as I noted, minimum two acre lot size. The second thing is the ADU cannot be more than 900 square feet of usable floor area. And some of the things that we'd like to come back to the board later or discuss within, within community development and, and further develop is what is usable square feet? What is usable floor area? Does that include, you know, out to the exterior walls? How do you calculate that? So that's just an example of one thing that needs to be sorted out.
Does that mean they could have like a carport with it?
That also remains to be determined. There's a lot of variables. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's not floor area.
I believe that's usually not considered usable floor area, but then the county can also, the county's not prohibited from creating regulations that address things like garages, carports, extra stuff like that. The ADU is required to be located no more than 100 feet from the existing single family dwelling. Again, the variable here is, does that mean the whole thing needs to be within 100 square feet? Does that mean one little corner needs to be, you know, things like this.
Needs one corner, right?
We're not quite sure, and it's not prescribed in the, in the law yet. So this is, this is another thing that we would need to address, and the board would make, to make a decision. And the biggie is that statewide wildfire risk maps must be approved, and the accessory dwelling unit must comply with the Oregon Residential Specialty Code, AKA R 327, relating to wildfire hazard mitigation for the mapped area. So as we just discussed, those maps have to be in place, so that's the June 2022 date before this can be done. That's our interpretation. As Kyle noted, the buildings, the building code is a little bit less defined. It's unclear, as he already stated, if, if the county decided, hey, we want to go forward and we're going to build this most restrictive R 327 before you guys kind of settle it at the state level. We don't know if that's a possibility yet. But we do know that the maps are kind of a hard, a hard deadline. And so nothing can really be done on the wildfire side from there, before there. The lot or parcel and ADU must comply with the rules of the State Board of Forestry under ORS 477 015 to 477 061. And this is another example of a kind of tangled knot of cross-references between Senate Bill 762 and 391. Part of 762 actually amends ORS 477, which pertains to the wildland urban interface definition. So it's kind of a circular, circular reference. So that must be sorted out, those definitions, before we can determine if this lot or parcel and ADU complies with that. It's a little bit confusing because it's our interpretation, or I should say my interpretation, that this rural ADU bill was written possibly prior to 762 being finalized. And this ORS 477 that they're referring to was in a slightly different state than it is now. And Ed can speak more clearly to this, but the long and the short of it is that the, we do need to wait for that, that WHOI definition. And subsequently, if it's not subject to that WHOI definition, in other words, if it falls outside of it, this bill requires the ADU to have defensible space and fuel break standards as developed in consultation with local fire protection service providers. So it might not have to comply with kind of the statewide stuff, but you have to coordinate locally. And so that'll be another coordination aspect to determine what standards are required for that. And again, because we don't yet know who's in the WHOI, who's not in the WHOI, what that definition is, that's kind of a TBD placeholder there. Similarly, local regulations must ensure that the ADU has adequate access for firefighting equipment, safe evacuation, and staged evacuation areas. So these are all things that need to be defined and vetted by kind of the road department, the fire districts, all of the, all of the agencies that are involved with that. That's just a taste of some of the, some of the pieces. These are the kind of the big, the big items that are TBD in terms of what, what decision points there are going to be, both for the board and then things that are happening at the state level.
So you didn't include the fact that they can't be short-term rental? Just because it's, that's another.
It cannot be, yeah, that is, I didn't include it in my PowerPoint, it is included in the memo. And that is a big one, and thank you for bringing that up. The ADU cannot be used as a short-term rental. So one of the decision points is, does the board, how, how do you, how do you do that? Does the board want to write in a requirement for a restrictive covenant in, in the sale? Or are there other options? How do you enforce that, et cetera, et cetera? So that's, that's a big one as well.
But when you consider what, there's 1,500 to 2,000 Airbnbs in Bend, think how many houses that takes out of the market and what that does to affordable.
Yeah, and I think that was probably, probably the intent, although I can never be sure. But yeah, that's.
No, I think, I think it really was.
Yeah, yeah. So.
Is there anything that would prevent someone from building themselves an ADU and then renting out their primary residence as a short-term rental?
In theory, no. I think you can do, you know, as long as Deshutes County doesn't regulate short-term rentals besides this, whatever the provisions of the ADU are, technically you could, you could do that today. You could rent out your single family home as an Airbnb. So yeah, I think, I think that is a possibility. Then lastly, there's just a procedural options for how to process this. Once all of these details are kind of hammered out, the planning department can administer it in a ministerial way, which is clear and objective standards. There's usually little to no notice hearings requirements. For instance, things are defined right in code, and you have to prove right up front that you can meet that. Or a slightly more complex process is a land use decision. That usually involves a notice of application, notice of public hearing, or decision if there is a public hearing. And then it's, it's a little more subject to discretion of staff. You, you have to say, okay, well, this is how I'm going to provide adequate access, and staff is ultimately, or the hearings office officer, the judge of that. So these are just two different approaches for how, how to structure these, these applications going forward. So another timeline, similar to Kyle's, just to go over this, June 2021, the passage of 7, 391. The initial WHOI definition is supposed to be defined by fall 2021 or winter 2022. The big one that I would kind of circle mentally in red is June 2022 is those wildfire hazard maps would be published. And then April 2023, as Kyle stated earlier, any new building code standards can't become operative until this date at the earliest. And with that, I'm happy to answer questions. So our intention is to, you know, we can come back to the board with kind of more specific decision points or pathways forward. And this is just meant as a, a general overview of kind of things that will be considered and things should be on the, to be on the radar.
So representatives, you guys talked about maybe changing that one ruling, you know, the 100 foot to like 150 feet, but that's really not going to impact anything that we're talking about today, is it?
I mean, we'll still have to, whatever that number is, we'll still have to figure out, does that?
If it's from the corner to the corner.
Yeah, exactly. One, one little inch. So the number, I mean, that is significant, but it won't really impact the way that we interpret that.
Okay, and then I heard from somebody who has 200 feet to make theirs legal. So I'm like, okay.
That was, that was what I was going to ask about is, you know, the, the idea of keeping it close, you know, I, I really appreciate because, you know, in terms of fragmentation of the landscape, you know, the, the rural landscape or the habitat, it's, you know, it kind of gets a little bit closer to basically only having one building. But if we have a whole bunch of units out there that we want to bring out of the shadows that are more than 100 feet, I'm, I'm wondering how we, how we deal with that. And, and so I, you know, I know that, I know that the fact that there are illegal ADUs out there is, is something that we sort of tiptoe around, but is there any way to get some information about, you know, how far these illegal ADUs are from existing primary residences so that we can try to make, you know, try to make this work as, you know, balance those, balance those interests as best possible?
It's a good question, and how to bring existing ADUs into compliance is, is a, a large conversation. And I don't know kind of what kind of records we have about, about ones that are out there right now. I don't know if Peter, we probably don't know. So that'll be an interesting conversation. I don't know if it's a matter of outreach, you know, just a general, general outreach to say, here, here's the criteria. If you, if you think you comply, then maybe you can come down this path. But I'm not sure if you're, if you're beyond that and you already clearly do not comply, and it's not something you can retroactively fix, you know, like changing your building materials or something, if you're just 500 feet out there, I'm not sure if there will be a path. That's certainly something we could explore, but if this is the way the law is written, I'm a little bit doubtful, frankly.
Well, making those legal to me is really, it actually is important. Look at the workforce housing and how many places are now closed because they don't have enough help. You know, the restaurants are closed on Monday, Tuesdays, you know, they're not open for lunches anymore, they don't have enough help. So, and people can't find a place to live here. So it, the 900 square feet is so significant, and I hate to think that this is going to take three years, like, you know, our 40 acre project that we donated to. take three years, like, you know, our 40-acre project that we donated to Redmond for the 485 units, and what is that, projected to take five years or something in order to actually have the first person move in? Yeah. So I know building 900 square feet doesn't take that much time, and hopefully, you know, we can be right on top of it at all points so that we can, you know, get workforce housing.
Yes, and it's important to note, you know, for instance, the 100-feet distance, you know, there are certain things that we can be more restrictive than the state, but we can't...
Be less.
...really be less. So, you know, that is a potential sticking point in certain places, or whether it's the size or what have you, but there are certain things that, you know, the county does not have discretion over, and certain things that we do. So it's a matter of kind of parsing those out and figuring out the best path forward.
In the memo, it also mentioned that, you know, because of the unique groundwater concerns we have in South County, it might actually make sense to require, you know, even larger parcel size. And, you know, just kind of within a particular groundwater zone of concern, and I would, you know, I think that that's a very good idea, and I would support. I was taking a close look at that.
Noted.
Well, this is the beginning of what the state legislature has provided to us, and it's going to be a while before we can get any of this on the ground, obviously, so, you know, we're getting emails from folks that was put out in an editorial in the newspaper about what's your opinion on this? And it's interesting because some of this is first time that people have heard about it, you know, and even though it's been a topic during legislative session, so we'll keep it going.
I will also note that, you know, we've obviously been getting a ton of inquiries since about five minutes after the law passed, but we have a website on the community development page that does lay out kind of the basics, and we have links to all the meetings, so all of these meeting materials are available there. We spell out, you know, the very basic criteria, note the fire constraints and things like that. So if the commissioners want to send people that way, that direction, that's a good kind of written resource that's up there if you get inquiries yourselves.
So what do you think with using R327 as your top standard for building? What would 900 square feet cost in today's world? I mean, is it going to be the $300 a square foot? Because I know lumber is now starting to drop again, the commodities went down last month, but yeah, I just was curious what I can tell people, like, okay, if you're building, you know, less than 1,000 square feet, expect to whatever, and you can rent it for, you know, what are those numbers?
That's a good question, and I don't remember the per square foot.
The only thing I could reference to is back in February, as part of the mitigation advisory committee, wildfire mitigation advisory committee, we came up with some rough numbers in consultation with contractors as well as local building associations, and a 2,400-square-foot house, we said, is probably going to cost roughly in the range of $6,000 to incorporate R327. So you could extrapolate down from that to 900 square feet and get kind of a rough estimate. The only thing that is unclear within that is because R327 is going to be tweaked at some point over the next coming months, there may be some additional standards that weren't factored into that initial estimate, but I think that's probably a pretty good starting point. And we can certainly come up with. I know we've tried to get some more updated numbers in association with COBA, as well as some other members, our assistant building official, reaching out to some of those, but they haven't been able to give us an updated estimate since that $6,000 figure.
Well, I heard an interesting story yesterday that actually it ends up, it's our personal insurance company was out in our neighborhood inspecting people's property, you know, right down the road from the fire, and they're going to be getting back to people saying, you need to do such and such and such and such. So, you know, if it's going to take the state a while to actually come up with these new regs and rules and everything, but the insurance company is their way ahead of it. So I thought that was fascinating. They didn't call, they didn't let the homeowners know, but they were there on their property inspecting. So remember how important it was to have insurance companies part of that team, that advisory board, because they, you know, they've got to look after their company's future.
And when they can boil it down to dollars and cents for people, sometimes people are more accepting of things than if the government is telling you to do it. So I'm really glad to hear that those insurance companies are stepping up in that way.
Exactly. I mean, that fire hasn't taken out any homes, and neither, I believe, has the one in Le Pine, but, you know, just to know, people, you know...
We have a petition of three this afternoon.
Oh, three? Okay, well, I was going to be surprised because that fire moved so fast.
Yeah.
So fast. So anyway, yeah, it is, that's what's happening out there in the real world.
Okay, well, as I say, it's been on the agenda, and it's just the beginning.
So I...
I don't know where else we can go today.
I suggest that we can come back in probably a couple of months, a quarter perhaps, unless something dramatic happens in the interim and kind of report back on the progress of both of these bills, you know, for instance, after that information session, things like that. And in the meantime, we can kind of be working on doing our homework on our side in terms of some of the things that we can chip away at if desired, so.
Well, and I would like to very specifically advocate for a garage associated with this ADU if it's not defined. So it's really important, you know, being able to live, especially in a hot and cold climate like this, you know, the wintertime for elder, you know, because it could be the mother-in-law unit literally, right? So the elderly getting in and out of a vehicle in an enclosed garage into a small apartment is a really nice scenario, but having to, you know, walk through the snow to get to your front door for your small apartment is a whole different world, so.
But 900 square feet, you know, it is a good amount of space, which could include a garage. I mean, like, that's something we'll need to grapple with at some point. I mean, I, in the, you know, a couple of years ago, I went through the process of building an ADU on top of my garage. It's about 620 square feet, and it is a very nice spacious one-bedroom apartment, could have been a two-bedroom apartment.
Great idea, put it on top of the garage.
Yeah, but, you know, it's an excellent-sized living space for a single person or, you know, a couple who share a bedroom, and, I mean, that only takes up 620 square feet and, you know, huge kitchen area and all that stuff. So there actually is room to have a garage in addition to those 620 square feet within 900 square feet, but yeah, I mean, we should, I'm sure we'll be having a lot of detailed discussions about this.
And I just want to thank Nick LeLac for working so hard on this forever. So appreciate it. You know, it was a goal I had, and I remember someone said they would not vote for me because I was for ADUs, and now we're seeing the emails of the haters of the ADUs, and I'm like, seriously, people, we need workforce housing, and, or mother-in-law housing, or, you know, just housing for people, help. It's just such an opportunity to make things more comfortable for our community and actually allow people to live here that work here. So thank you, Nick.
And the provisions to restrict these from being used for short-term rentals are really, in my opinion, extremely important for realizing that vision and making this, you know, making this available for workforce, available for family members, and, you know, other really important uses for our community. And that's going to be very tricky to enforce, because, you know, when the city of Bend was trying to kind of come up with a regulatory framework for ADUs, they, you know, for their short-term rentals, they found, I want to say, hundreds of people who hadn't gotten a permit, who were on Airbnb or in other places, so. So, I mean, the process of sorting that out and, yeah, monitoring and enforcement is, we're going to have to come up with a whole concept for that.
Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thanks very much.
Next item, House Bill 3295, marijuana tax revenue cannabis advisory panel discussion. So we asked state legislature to reinstate clarity on a marijuana tax revenue stream that had been in place, and then the powers that be decided to switch gears on us after the citizens voted marijuana, no more marijuana production approvals in the rural county, which got us here today. So, yeah.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Peter Gatawski, planning manager. This memorandum was prepared in collaboration, not only with community development department, but certainly with legal counsel. As the memorandum notes, House Bill 3295 provides, or really ensures, that counties that participate in Oregon's marijuana economy can receive a share of the marijuana revenue. And this was a bill that was, as noted in the memorandum, was sponsored by Representative Jaceph Croft and Representative Jack Zika, I think specifically addressing Deschutes County's circumstance associated with the ultimate opt-out of the marijuana program at the local level. As noted in the memorandum, House Bill 3295 obligates, in this case, Deschutes County, to the extent that they want to take advantage of this marijuana revenue or taxation, requires the creation and appointment of a cannabis advisory panel. And the panel has to be, at a minimum, has to have a certain number of members, those are listed on Page Two. I won't necessarily read through them, but there's a, you know, it's a diverse panel representative of industry, both on the marijuana production, processing, and retail side, a member of the Board of County Commission, someone from the economic, someone representing economic development, and the county sheriff, to just name a few of those positions. The board is, to the extent that they're contemplating a cannabis advisory panel, they're not limited to just these specific individuals, but at a minimum, the ones that are noted in the bill must be appointed. And then there's a minimum of three questions that are, have to be addressed by the panel that speak to the use of the monies that are transferred under the taxation program, increases in public safety measures related to marijuana use and marijuana entities in the county, and then issues essentially presented by the industry as it pertains to the unincorporated area of Deschutes County. The reading of the bill also acknowledges that if you create a cannabis advisory panel, they must meet quarterly. So it's an obligation to ensure that this panel is active and responsive based on the provisions of the bill, and with those requisite elements, Deschutes County has the ability to report to the state that they've met these obligations, and I think it's our understanding that as we approach January 2022, the county becomes eligible to then receive their proportion of marijuana tax revenue. So to start the conversation...
Is this happening around the state to all counties at this point in time that are opted into marijuana? Do we know that information?
It's Deschutes County only, isn't it?
I think it was, the question was, if I may, Mr. Chairman, that this bill is, is this bill, you know, targeting those local governments that have opted out?
Well, no, I'm talking about existing counties that have existing production. Are there other counties that are required to put a committee like this in place currently?
No, I think it's exclusively calling out, if you look in section, if you look at section, section, I think, I'm going to say section, section four, a county that, section four, which I can read for you, I think is explicitly calling out Deschutes County. A county that adopts an ordinance described in an ORS 175B, 759-sub4D, between January 1st of 2018 and September 1st, 2021, is eligible to receive transfers of monies under the state's tax revenue program when the county appoints a cannabis advisory panel. So this is, this obligation to create this panel was, through the leadership of legislative delegation, was to allow this opportunity for Deschutes County, if they're interested in receiving their proportionate share of the marijuana tax revenue, it's available if there's a commitment to establishing this panel and the representation at a minimum, and responding to those three questions that I highlighted, and meeting quarterly.
One of the things I learned in trying to do some homework on this is that these cannabis advisory panels are now...
Only one.
Oh, no, no, no. There's only one that is required by HB 3295 in order to receive revenue, but there are many of these cannabis advisory panels in operation in southwest Oregon that are now considered integral and just a standard part of the governance of marijuana in those counties. So that's actually where the idea came from. It was, you know, my understanding is that there were legislators from southwest Oregon who said, you want that revenue, you should do what we're doing. So just because this piece of legislation, dealing with one county that has, you know, opted in and then opted out, only specifies this as a requirement for us, doesn't mean that this isn't a tool that's not being used in a lot of other places to, again, effectively manage the governance of marijuana in other counties.
I think you're referring to the counties, though, that have the cartel in them, seriously. And, you know, I feel so badly for them, and thank goodness we have that short growing season like Willawa, because apparently, according to some of the commissioners we've heard from, the problems they're dealing with are overwhelming. I mean, their legal departments are not what we have in Deschutes County, and they are having to go together in order, when they're doing raids in their counties, in their respective counties, to actually have as much force as what they're seeing on the ground and what's happening to their interiors.
Yeah, and this model isn't necessarily perfect for us. The requirement to have someone from the Water Resources Department or, you know, a water district involved, I actually think is kind of silly here in Deschutes County, but I, you know, in a place like southwest Oregon, where there's a whole lot of surface streams that, you know, people could be illegally, you know, siphoning off of, and water is even more, you know, domestic water supply is even more constrained than it is here, that could make sense. But, you know, even though that doesn't, even though I think the, you know, people from Water World or Water Organizations might roll their eyes and be annoyed when we're asking them to participate in such an advisory panel, you know, I still think we'll probably be able to find someone to do that, and, you know, it's not, it doesn't really hurt anything, it may not be necessary, but, yeah, this is definitely a model that was developed in a different setting, but we certainly have, you know, the three topics that are going to be dealt with by these advisory panels, you know, how the money's going to get used, you know, how to ensure public safety in a county where there is some marijuana production, and, you know, the issues presented by production processing, wholesaling, and distribution in a county where those activities are happening, and the... in a county where those activities are happening, and the, you know, the legal activities are what's generating the tax revenue, those are three things that we do need to think about and work on. So I, you know, I appreciate the concern that this isn't tailor-made for us. This is sort of taking a concept that was developed in other counties and bringing it here, but it, I don't have huge concerns about having to, you know, meet this requirement. And I think that there could be beneficial, there could be value and benefit from having these kinds of discussions.
So, to be really safe, Peter, what date are you saying that we should have this committee formed? I mean, it seems like there's a bit of confusion, but just so we clearly follow this, so we do get our marijuana funding?
So Commissioner Dare, on page two, it is, staff does acknowledge that there's some confusing passages in the bill. The takeaway message, I think, from staff is, to the extent that the board is interested in creating a cannabis advisory panel and appointing members, that there's no penalty for convening that panel early, or as soon as the board feels it's acceptable, starting, you know, as early as this fall, so that it's up and running and providing feedback ultimately to the community, to the state's satisfaction, so that it's operative by January 1st, 2022, which then, as I read it, it puts you in position to then respectfully request your proportion of, the county's proportion of marijuana tax revenue, which is then, I think, filed at some point, like July 1st of every.
Okay, so, yeah, so we've missed the July 1st deadline this time, but next year we, that would be the deadline that we have to.
I think it would be, to the extent that the board is interested in a cannabis advisory panel, having it up and running prior to January 1st of 2022 will be essential, so that you can document that you've met the obligations and you are in a position to receive, the counties are in a position to receive their proportionate amount of tax revenue for that supplemental on July 1st.
So we're going to have a group of about eight people that sit in a room or get to a Zoom meeting, talk about these three topics, the use of the dollars, the public safety, and issues associated with the industry, and give us, as a board of commissioners, a written report or whatever may come out of it. Is there any requirement that, I mean, you know, the use of the monies, if they give us a spreadsheet and say, the estimate is this, and we want you to spend it like this, is there any requirement that we follow that to the T, or is it a recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, not according to the bill.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, as the questions are, and it's a minimum of three questions. So, again, to the extent that the board is interested in convening a panel and appointing members, it starts with those three questions. Those are informative. I think because the panel's meeting quarterly, it presumes a dialogue. And I think one element to contemplate, I mean, that just comes into play when you convene a regular panel, of which certainly the Community Development Department staff regularly participates or convenes advisory groups, is there's follow-up information that comes into play. So, you know, you might have the three questions, and then there'll be some respectful requests for additional information to understand certain aspects of how, related to the marijuana industry. So I would just acknowledge that it's not just a quarterly meeting in terms of the preparatory time, sure the questions are, and the agenda is meeting the board's ultimate expectations, but recognizing that this will be a dynamic exchange, and there will likely be additional requests or demands on the staff that supports the panel, just to continue that dialogue for the foreseeable future.
In my public experience, one of the key things to get someone to participate in a volunteer advisory group is, you know, is to make sure that they understand, or for them to believe that their, you know, their input will be listened to and seriously considered. Doesn't, you know, you're not necessarily promising them that you're going to do what they, what they're asking, but, you know, that you're actually going to give them a fair listen, and then not their, they're not just there to either rubber stamp what you want to do, or to, you know, put a lot of brain power into something and then just have that input be completely ignored.
Well, so there's a flip side to this. I mean, we didn't ask for this committee. It was given to us by state law, if, and if we want the revenue associated with activity in our county. So this current board, would we, what would we want from a group that was defined for us by outside entities? Sorry, I didn't need to add that to it. But, I mean, if we were going to put a committee together for marijuana, are there questions that we would ask for them? I mean, as I say, I still have kind of a bitter taste in my mouth about this, because this is statewide interests that define this for us. So there was, this isn't even the local industry. This is statewide interests that put this in our lap. And, yeah.
If this, this legislation was sponsored and moved by our local legislators, who were elected by the residents of Deschutes County to represent their best interests in Salem. So, you know, whether they talked to people around the state or not, I mean, the bill is the product of our legislators. So I think that they made the best effort possible to get us, our revenue, and also do something that would contribute, again, to the governance of marijuana in our community. I am actually, I think that these are the three categories of, the three topic areas that are prescribed for these, for this committee are actually good ones. And, you know, honestly, because we have so much, because we have so much experience with this already, and there's been so much policymaking done already, the work for this, these panels might be kind of light. You know, like, you know, we're going to talk about the monies transfer, how we're going to use the monies transferred to the county, which is going to be less than what it used to be, but we have a whole bunch of things that we have used those monies for in the past. You know, marijuana detectives, you know, beefing up our code enforcement, you know, drug prevention work. And, you know, I just can't, I can't imagine anyone saying, like, I've thought of this completely new thing that we could use these revenues for, that's more important than the three things that we were using it for before. So, I mean, the, you know, kind of the deliberation, the deliberative work, I, you know, I just don't think is going to be very hard. And, you know, we, the legal marijuana businesses in the community have the same interest that we do in seeing black market marijuana production and sale activity shut down. So, I mean, I just, you know, I don't, I don't, I don't really picture a lot coming out of this panel that's either new or surprising to us.
Is there support for this marijuana advisory, oh, I'm sorry, the cap, the cannabis advisory panel?
Well, it is funding, and it will be interesting to see how much Measure 110 sucks off of the marijuana money. Apparently, what, we were like ninth as far as our marijuana production for the state, so we weren't at the top, definitely. And I guess there's really, like, southern Oregon has this giant their way up there with their legal. So, you know, it would be, you know, I know we used it for some really good purposes in the past. So I would, yeah, you know, if we have no choice, I guess, you know, it sounds like it, maybe, you know, we'll do it.
Okay, and you're supportive also?
I would support.
So we're proceeding with a cannabis advisory panel effort, as defined by state law.
There's seven of them on the list. I've had to count them like five times, but, yeah, there's seven people, different, at least.
Yeah, no, I drew a line at three and four, so I knew when I said eight that it was seven, but I.
I know, I kept going like.
Yeah, I didn't need to go back.
Seven dots, so thank you, folks.
Yep.
And that's a minimum. I mean, if we have other types of people who we think really need to be in the mix on this, we can even require more, or we can decide to do more. But it is a, I mean, I think it's a pretty good list.
Let's just hope we can find a watermaster that will go on this, because what if we can't? And then are we going to be considered illegal, eligible for all of our funding? So that might be the hardest one to fill. What do you think?
I think the county funds part of the watermaster, so.
Oh, good, well, Dave.
Get the watermaster to be on it.
Okay, well, I just wanted to be sure.
That's my hunch.
I saw Kyle Gorman, you know, come out to, you know, turn out to do his duty when we had the hemp panel, so I, you know, they may roll their eyes, like, why am I here? And what value am I contributing? But, you know, we can make it happen.
In terms of selecting members, I guess my thought was, in a week or so, a week or two, staff could return with a couple options. One is, for the Marijuana Advisory Committee, the board initiated a recruitment, and recruitment is certainly an option. Another approach could be, you know, to allow staff to assemble a tentative list, a preliminary list of representatives that we bring back to the board for conversation, consideration, and if it was appropriate, probably at a subsequent meeting, an appointment. But looking for, ultimately looking for direction from the board in terms of how you want to fill those seven dots at a minimum. Again, you know, one of the members is a county commissioner, one of the members is a member of the sheriff's office, a member of the public, things of that sort. So both options are viable, but certainly looking for direction in terms of how you want to select members, and maybe as part of that, as you consider that question, you know, when do you, when is an appropriate time to think about convening the panel? You know, September gives you, you know, you know, coming out of the summer months, people are, you know, away from their day-to-day routine. So I offer that for your consideration.
As I look through the list, industry could probably provide some folks, the sheriff could provide, you know, the office of the sheriff could select someone, we can do a commission position, watermaster's going to be, you know, a position that's pretty obvious, and edco could provide somebody for the economic development. So we might just be as simple as filling a member of the public position, you know, keep it, and then go down that list that I just mentioned and just make those connections.
Maybe a chamber. I mean, edco, edco is, you know, edco is charged with trade, trade sector manufacturing. I mean, I suppose, I mean, I'm sure that some of the marijuana producers are actually, you know, exporting out of other parts of the state, out of county, but I don't know.
Yeah, so that's fine. But as I say, we could keep it as simple as recruiting a member of the public, you know, as an accident for the Board of Commissioners, and then the rest of them just outreach to the other parts of the community that could send a representative.
Since we have, since we have a very limited number of retail licenses outside of incorporated cities, would, would my fellow commissioners feel comfortable making that open to a retailer from within one of the urban growth boundaries? Because, I mean, we have one or two?
Two.
Two retail licenses outside of the.
Two licenses, I think, one's operational. They're both operational.
Yeah, we should ask them first if they want.
We could ask them first, but I mean, if they don't want to.
Let's start with the ones that are in the rural, and then open it up after that.
I like your idea of, like, September. I would say maybe October, so we actually do it this year, and we are ready to go for next year. So if there's any question.
You mean convening the first meeting in October?
Yeah, I think that probably, that should keep us safe, right?
Yeah, I think that meets, meets the, puts the board in an excellent position to document that they've met the requirements of this bill. So I, based on the comments, staff can, if interested, setting aside the member of the public, we can return in a, in a week or so's time to give you a list of, maybe give you a list of suggested individuals or confirmations, and then with that information, you know, if you find you want to do a recruitment for some, from a member of the public, you could do that, but there would be, they would know who's, who else is participating. There would be context, if that seems workable.
Sounds good.
And then we'll draw straws for the commission seat.
Yeah.
And I presume the.
We could flip coins.
The Community Development Department will convene the quarterly meeting, will make it available. I mean, we can talk about these details as we get closer to October, but Community Development Department, you know, in coordination with the board, will figure out a time to convene this panel, have it an opportunity for in-person or remote, and can facilitate the minimum of three questions or any others that come up organically. We can capture the conversation and produce a very succinct quarterly report or summary of the meeting, maybe glorified meeting notes or meeting minutes, and then continue that process for the foreseeable future while this program's in place.
Let's advocate for in-person if possible. I mean, let's do that. And offer dinner, why not, quarterly? I mean, I think that's the intention of this, is to just make connections across the industry with the community and public safety, and, you know, make sure water's being utilized legally, so.
That sounds great. I know we have a community development director that's in a position for the next five, six weeks, right, next September 1st, does that start? So we've got plenty, I'm kidding. Trying to get a reaction. Great, so we'll come back in a couple of weeks with additional information with that list, and then continue to coordinate to have that in-person panel in the evening with dinner provided to execute this law.
Yep. I'd say for the first category, I believe that the Cascade Cannabis Association is the closest thing we've got to like a trade group or an industry association, you know, in the region. So, you know, that's probably a good channel to turn up a producer.
Yeah, great suggestion. We have reached out to them as well for the unrelated amendments that are being considered by the Planning Commission for adjusting hours for marijuana retail, as well as input on the annual reporting, so we can follow up.
That hours of operation item, I think, falls squarely under topic number three, too. So, I mean, this.
Yeah, there would be a.
Advisory panel could be, you know, a body to help us get some of the work that we already have planned done.
Great.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you.
Thank you, Peter.
To get a laugh out of it. The administrator kind of fell flat.
Yeah, I just didn't want to make sure, I wanted to make sure that we didn't assume that community development will facilitate it in the event that administration or public safety or finance, whoever else wanted to facilitate.
Finance could do it.
Yeah, because there's all kinds of issues.
Maybe legal.
All kinds of options. Any department reports to the administrator.
Do you all have any concerns about an unfunded mandate?
Well, maybe the committee would recommend paying for the facilitation process with some of the marijuana monies.
Makes sense to me.
Okay, item number 13, legislative session, outcomes and impacts. We just saw a few impacts and outcomes.
Thank you, Commissioner DeBohn, for the record. Whitney Hale, Communications Director, and yes, this is.
And yes, this is our formal end of session check-in point with the board. I think it's been going on since one o'clock, but we'll just go ahead and continue. We do have Phil Schuyers on the line with us. I think it sounds like Phil may be having some internet connectivity issues. Stephanie, I think he's calling in if you see a call-in number. In the board's packet today, we canvassed departments and prepared an overview of bills that departments are anticipating will have fiscal or operational impacts for them. So there's a summary of those bills in your, in your packet. And obviously, you've heard about some of those today from Community Development. But I believe that Phil was planning to give you an overview of kind of where we landed with top priorities. And then we may have, I know that Chad Santola in the room to provide some updates in terms of impacts to solid waste. And we may have other department heads on the line as well who are ready to give you updates on how our priority legislation may impact their departments.
Great, thank you. So Phil Schuyers, thanks for joining us. It looks like you're on the phone today.
I am, and I apologize, Commissioners. They are replacing fiber lines in the community I live because of the heat damage from them. And so it's just going off and on all day. I at least provided consistency during the call. So, so I just wanted to, if it's okay with you Commissioners, to kind of start at a 30,000-foot level and then narrow down on the priorities that we walked into session with. How did they fare as we walked out of session? And kind of some of the tones that we saw that drove the conversation during session, but mostly also, how is that going to phase into what the next steps are? Because while we just got out of session, they have already released the timeline for having things ready for the February session if you want things considered. And so I will end on that part, but that's just kind of the outline that I plan to present, if that is okay with you folks. Starting off, I just wanted to share, so we've gotten the raw numbers back from everything that's going on in session. This last session, while it was definitely a session of first virtual COVID wildfire response, all of those things, managing the federal dollars that were coming into the state by the billions and billions over two administrations, all of that was a first for a lot of the legislature. And one of the things that was very interesting about this session, as you know, is almost a third of the entire legislature was brand new. So one of those topics, when I, when I say there's political narrative that kind of set the tone, the pace, things like that, that is what I'm talking about is the political tone was that one-third of these legislators are walking in not having previous experience on how the process works. That's kind of nerve-wracking and argue, just because you don't, we, we sure would hope that we never would have a virtual session again. I, it was, it was not great on process. It definitely, while more people able to maybe video call in, the process to manage that was definitely, I think, on both sides, very frustrating. And so there was a lot of learning, but I do think that there were some good things that did come from this forced use of technology that may stay on in pre, in next session. I do think that there, we are, do expect a lot more virtual testimony opportunities to come forward. However, just hopefully the, the management of those committees can actually make that, that flow better. Because while there were more opportunities for people to call in, it definitely did not increase the number of people able to participate in the process either. So, that said, that was a major tone of the session. They, while that was all going on, they still introduced about 2,519 pieces of legislation. You do hear randomly people talking about the number 4,000. That includes the bills, the associated amendments, minority reports, things like that. But just raw numbers of the actual number of bills introduced was about 2,519. About 1,500 of those were in the House, the remaining in the Senate. And just for context for Deschutes County, out of all of those bills, we were tracking about 332 of them. And how that breaks down, we had 11 that were priority ones, 50 were labeled as priority twos, 111 priority threes, and the remainder were priority fours, fives, or just not yet rated. So there was, I think, looking back in previous sessions to where we were in this session, I think your staff was amazing of trying to really funnel down those numbers. In the past, I know we were north of 400 bills trying to track, which is, it's, it's just not manageable sometimes with the pace and the nuances, especially this session with everything being a new process. So being able to really narrow those down and prioritize them one through five was very helpful as far as our end. And I hope it was somewhat helpful for the team at, on the county level as well. I just wanted to pause. I just, I think I heard somebody maybe trying to ask a question.
It was one of the Commissioners sneezing.
I think I got a call from somebody that came to my office yesterday. Oh, my God.
Sorry about that.
Or maybe the room is like 50 degrees.
Not a problem. Well, just to carry on, so those were the raw numbers, session by numbers. Actually, I wanted to add one more thing here. One thing that we also saw this session that was not in the last session is just the amount of committees. So while this was a first for virtual, for all of them, we also saw committees in 2019 for the similar session. There was 40, 48 committees. This session, there was 55 committees. And all of those committees were new in the House, on the House side. So 10 new committees on the House side. A few dropped, I think, joint committees lost one, but that was obviously made up for on the House to increase that number. And on any given day, I think you could see there was almost about 30 hours of committee, committee activity going on on average every day. And so that is definitely a significant increase in just workload that the legislature took on this session than in the past. A lot, in the past, a lot of it was more joint. They obviously did separate committees in the chambers of the session. So again, just session by numbers, those, that is where I just want to wrap up there. And then just finally jump over into what I was noting was the political tone and where we're trying to, to go here. So one of the things you're going to see that started this session that is going to carry on into the next session is just the tones. Obviously, one-third was new. We talked about that. If you look at this next session where we're going to be coming back in off of the heels of rulemaking, a very significant bills that were passed this session, you're going to be walking into a likely Senate where you're going to have about a third of them turned over just based off of announcements of folks saying that they don't plan to run again. You are looking at a House with potentially significant leadership turnovers. And that's very important for the county in the interim because while we've had very long, stable leadership in both chambers, and I guess, you know, everybody has their different opinion on the, the political views of that leadership, but for consistency sake, Senator Courtney has been Senate President for a very long, a very long period of time and, I think, longest in state history. Speaker Kotek is the longest-serving Speaker of the House in state history. Ways and Means leadership has not changed significantly. If those roles change, it does dramatically change the, the process or the operations of the, of the chambers. You can look a couple of sessions back, I think, oh, one and oh, two, where you had different leadership styles where chambers didn't want to work with each other. The House had its own budget committees. The Senate had its own budget committees. There could be a lot of change. So I just do want to note that because as we come off of the rulemaking, where we might be identifying issues that the legislature should consider for, for Deschutes County, we may be looking at a completely different space of leadership. And so that was a tone that was set, started to being set in this session. You saw that with Speaker Kotek on the Republican side. You saw leadership changeover. And then you're having recall efforts currently going on the back end of session. On the front end of session for the Democrats, you had Speaker Kotek going through some leadership challenges. And on the back end, you have President Courtney going through some leadership challenges. So both caucuses are in dynamics there. And that's just kind of that narrative that I, that we try to keep in our mind that you're trying to bring a piece of legislation or concept forward. Who are you going to be talking to? And how are they going to manage the process that you have to navigate through? So, that said, going into this session, we had on our list six top priorities. Two, I originally started off at four, but we did add two budgets that were important to the county. Number one priority was walking in and coming away with new circuit court judges. And I think is, is while we didn't get three, we were able to get two new circuit court judges in the budget, in the program change bill. It changed the statutory language needed for Deschutes to get those. Those are expected, they were fully funded in the, in the session bills separate from that as well. And so that should all be rolled in moving forward and part of the new current service level for the agency budget to maintain moving, moving into next bienniums. No, I think that was a good thing. In the past two sessions, we were able to get to that point. Just things didn't get across the finish line with walkouts and others. What was noticeable in this session, though, I would like to point out is, in the past sessions, we were not the only ones getting circuit court judges. In this session, I can't identify other counties that have received circuit court judges. So I do think that that is something to note, that they took the time and effort as a legislative body to recognize that concern and make sure that it was addressed. And so we marked that off as something that was achieved, that the county can report on. Obviously, we still need that third if we want to keep up with pace. But in our conversations around this, I would just say if there's a way to track the data as these new circuit court judges come on, on, onboard, and be able to tell the story of how we've had the backlogs or the delaying cases, or whatever the right terminology is, I, and I apologize if that's not the right terminology. But if there's data that we can be tracking so that we can make that better case for that third judge in a future session, I think it would be very important. They are definitely looking at data points in this conversation. So understanding what, what, what is these two judges going to help increase or simplify in our numbers? And what is the, were we still not reaching our full efficiency because of the lack of the third judge? We're going to have to be able to tell that story if you're planning to go back in and advocate for another judge there. We did not get the third judge there in the sense of, these are very high general fund positions. They are, while the state walked into session with a billion-dollar hole, more than a billion-dollar hole in their budget, they walked out of session with billions in surplus. What was noted and what did not change through that process was the Ways and Means leadership constantly looking at every corner and every page of a state budget and asking, if this is a general fund expenditure, how can it become an other fund or a federal fund or, or reduced in some manner? They are significantly looking at these general fund allocations and appropriations in every line item and asking those questions. And if it, if the answer is they can't, it's got to stay general fund, much like circuit court judges sometimes, then they are looking at hard data to figure out where the general fund appropriation needs to be at the state. And so again, that's just our recommendation as we, as the circuit court judges come into play, how to position yourself best for being able to tell that narrative and go after a third. Can I pause there and ask if there's any questions on the circuit court judge package?
Nope, pretty exciting. It really happened. I think.
Okay.
The governor, she mentioned it back to me once or twice, and I think Commissioner Dair did a great job, just touching everybody all the way up and down the whole system to make sure they knew we wanted judges, so.
It was amazing. I want to thank the residents of Deschutes County for that, honestly. The postcards and the phone calls people made, you know, they, they were wonderful. So glad everyone in Salem knew we needed two judges, really three.
And I have a host, Representative Crop in his position with his experience in the DA's office. Robbie was able to talk about it very tangibly.
That was pretty great. I, that showed up, I mean, the, the outreach that the Oregon Justice Department did to us and then the work behind the scenes that they did to package the information in the most compelling way possible. You could tell that Representative Crop had played a big role in that. And I was, I was excited to, to help talking with the Oregon Justice Department and, you know, and give some testimony as well.
And don't forget Chief Justice Walters has, has by Harper Bridge. And she thought that was really a good idea that what we did down there. So, yeah, it's, it's a small world, isn't it?
And maybe our lobbying efforts had something to do with it, too.
Maybe.
Well, well, it was definitely, that's why I'm saying on the front end is keeping, we knew, I, I think the agency was very good in, in visiting with the subcommittee. I think we knew about three-quarters of the way through that it would not end up in their budget or was unlikely to end up in their budget because of them trying to push for other, other budget issues as well. And so I do think that it ended up like we've seen in the past and made a decision by Ways and Means leadership and put into the program change and into session capital construction bills. So, so perfect. The other two issues, the other two next ones I had on the list, one, I'm not going to dive a ton into because it looks like you guys just had a robust conversation on, was the marijuana revenue bill. Was it the bill that if we had full control over passing that we probably would have wanted? Probably not. But is it give a tool in the toolbox for the county to go after these funds rather than having a for-sure answer that they are not available? I think yes. And I, I do want to give props out to our local delegation for the work they've done on that bill and reaching out to the statewide associations that they were trying to engage in the bill. I know it was a hard, hard fought battle against some of the people on committee. The Southern Oregon reps ended up did voting against the bill. But it was definitely more of a conversation of, hey, this is potentially taking more money that my county could receive. And so I don't think it was personal in any other ways other than a representative fighting for their counties and likewise. And so it passed. You guys have had that conversation. The other bill that was also a priority, which by the way, I do want to make, on the marijuana revenue bill, I do remember in the last budget capital construction build, and I'm still trying to find the answer from Amanda and LFO, I do think one of the big nervous issues we've had around, not just the Deschutes County issue, is what was ballot measure 110 going to do to marijuana revenues for counties and cities? And that was a really scary forecast on the front end of session. And I believe that they backfilled a lot of the funds that they were expected to be losing to ballot measure 110 with other sources of revenue due to the good revenue forecast the state was receiving. So I will shore that up, but I, I believe I saw at some point on the front end of session that, you know, hey, 70% of marijuana revenues are going to be, you know, going away into a, to address ballot measure 110. I think that is not the case for this one biennium. I do think there was some additional revenue backfilling that was done by the legislature to help reduce that hit to counties. I know for sure it was done in other budgets, which I will hit here in a second with the Oregon State Police Budget, where ballot measure 110 took a significant portion of funding and they backfilled it with other funds. So, but I will, I will shore that up so that I'm not giving you a vague answer on it. The, the other bill was the ADU bill. I know that that has been a baby of Nick's and the counties for many sessions. It was great to see that finally going off, going over the finish line this session. So I think priority-wise for this county, we said new judges, that passed, marijuana revenue bill passed in some form, the ADU priority passed. I believe Nick and Commissioners, you guys are going to have opportunity to discuss that bill at the Eastern Oregon Economic Summit because it's gotten a lot of interest recently by other communities. And I think Deschutes County is seen as the expert on that. So that's good. And then the last two, or the last three things that I had on our priority list, so total of six again, but the last three were more vague in the sense of we knew that they had to be addressed and they were important to the county. One was some type of wildfire response. The other was the OSB budget, and the other was the veterans' budget. And so, real quick, if it's okay, I'm going to start on the back end there because the, the veterans' budget has the quickest update, then OSB and then the wildfire. I will pause and see how much you want me to go into that. On the veteran's budget, there was, one of the things we were worried about coming into session again with a budget deficit was county veteran services being cut. They're always usually on the table for reduced services, reduced cuts in a higher proportion than other agencies. The good news is they were able to maintain that budget at the current service level with a few investments. The investments that were probably most important to our region is one, the county services program and officers that was kept at current service level, which is a little bit higher than the last legislative adopted budget as, as it accounts for inflation, things like that. But there was also a $285,000 investment in staffing and, and also staffing, but also for stabilizing, stabilizing the home loan program for veterans. There's been a decrease in some of the utilization of these programs because other funds from the federal side have become available. But it, it just made the, the program a bit unstable based off of the expenditures for staffing versus what revenues are coming in from these of managing this program. The program was slated originally to have significant reductions. It ended up having the 100 or $285,000 investment, which is nice. There is a $650,000 investment for rural veterinary healthcare transportation programs. So that's something that the local areas will be able to apply for. It's going to be, while it's in the Veterans Department budget, it's going to be administered by ODOT. It's gonna be administered by ODOT, um, because then you, they don't have to hire additional staff for that. They already have program managers over there. Um, but it will be, uh, you'll still apply, I believe, through the Veterans Department, um, but ODOT will be managing or administering it. And then lastly, uh, this is where I was also talking, um, there will be a hundred, a $100,000 investment for emergency financing assistance for veterans. Um, it's a one-time investment, but there are, as we come out of COVID and impact, that there are veterans that you have constituents that have reached out and said, hey, they're, they're just needing help make ends meet. Um, the last two investments can help there. A hundred thousand was booty for financial assistance, and then they did a $324,000 investment for direct services for veterans, whether, and that can cover, um, mental health, uh, traditional healthcare, housing security, and employment. Um, so it's a pretty broad program, um, but it, it's there if, uh, as we come out of COVID that there's additional assistance that our veteran population needs. And I know, uh, Commissioner Dyer, that that was very important to you, um, that we were tracking that budget. And so I wanna make sure we reported on that.
Thank you, thank you, Phil.
Uh, nothing. Um, and then, uh, the OSP budget was also important, and this goes back to the ballot measure 110 as well. So OSP budget was scheduled to take a hit, um, uh, we were, we've always been supported in the past couple of sessions, um, due to some separate policy bills that while the policy bills got hearings about trooper, uh, copulation ratios, the, uh, the policy bills were never expected to pass, but at least get hearing so that if portions of those policy bills need to be enacted, it would be invest, it would be made in their actual budget bill. And so in the budget, they did get $5 million for 18 new troopers. Um, that, that also comes with vehicles and equipment. Um, and two, I believe, Commissioner Channing, I believe it was your question a couple sessions back where you were asking if we knew where the ARPA dollars the state was getting, what they're spending it on. This is a good example. They are gonna put 4.6 million of the ARPA dollars the state got to the state police, uh, for the purchasing of vehicles and new equipment. They saw that as one-time funds for one-time investments. Um, but that's kind of where we saw a lot of those ARPA funds being allocated is those type of, uh, the equipment and stuff to support, uh, staffing. But they would split it apart so the ARPA funds weren't paid for the actual FTEs, just the equipment. Um, and then also they, uh, they received, uh, $3.2 million, uh, for several positions, 16 new positions in the medical examiner's office, three new, um, to develop and establish a new digital forensic unit, and then 17 positions to assist, um, clearing backlogs for the firearms background check program. And so, uh, that, they're, they're seeing significant backlog and delays in that. And so they were able to get 17 new positions to help free that up. It is only those positions only budgeted for one biennium, Commissioners, but, uh, um, they were hoping to get through that backlog within the two years, so. And then finally, like I was noting earlier about measure 110, so a portion of the marijuana revenue dollars would always go to the state police budget. But the measure 110 took about $29.2 million of that, um, out of the state police budget. The legislature backfilled that completely to hold them harmless due to that. And so, uh, there's still the question of what to do next biennium, um, when that comes up again. But for at least this biennium, uh, those type of reductions due to the ballot measure passing were backfilled, so.
So Phil, I heard that they-
And then the last, oh, yes.
It's Commissioner Dyer. I just, I heard that they were gonna use some, uh, funding for the state police, actually to go to Southern Oregon for the cartel issues. You didn't mention that. Where, where are those coming from, out of the 18 new troopers?
Yeah, yes, they, uh, I can pull that up here in a second. Uh, they are separate line item, and it is, it is attached to Senate or House Bill 3000, but it's funded through, I actually don't think it's in the state, uh, state police budget. It's in the, uh, program change bill, the same one that had our Circuit Court judges. I believe they got three new positions to focus solely on Southern Oregon cartel. And then that they are to also report back to the legislature addition, and those who are to be, uh, established this year. So on the ground this year rather than in waiting for a biennium. So those are to be established. It's in connection with House Bill 3000. And, uh, my, uh, one of the issues they'll have is they have to report back to the legislature. I just can't remember if it's in February or the next full session on the status of Southern Oregon, what's going on down there, and what are the recommended resources needed, so.
Thanks for that.
And then the last thing that I just wanted to note that I know has been a conversation robustly on our calls, um, was just the wildfire. I'm skipping over a lot of those priority bills because, um, I believe if, uh, we can run that report of, out of all those bills that I, we had a lot that did not make it. There were a lot of those 2,500 bills that did not pass. And so we can run that report so you can see what those are, but these, I just wanted to summarize our report on our main priorities this session. The wildfire bill did get amended that last day. I think the last time we talked, it had just come out of capital construction and Ways and Means where it was a very heated discussion. Um, it was going down the lines where it would be, uh, very slim, uh, it would, it had the votes to pass, but it was a very slim, um, very urban-based support group to pass that. They pulled that back from the floor, adopted Mark Owen's, uh, amendment that was talked about in Ways and Means, and then put it back on the floor. And it was able to garner significant amount of support after that. Did not pass unanimously, um, but it did garner bipartisan support by, uh, urban, rural support, which was, I think, in something of this importance is really important to make sure that there's buy-in on all things. Um, that was a $22 million bill, two, sorry, not 22 million, $220 million bill. Um, those funds, it's going to be administered across nine different agencies. And I guess, I wanted to pause here, Commissioners, and say, I have a kind of a quick, uh, summary of which one of those agencies are, who are, or which ones are in charge of what on this bill. But I didn't know if that's beneficial for me to walk through now or to type that up and get to you in an email form, but I'm prepared to do it now if you'd like me to.
Email form's probably good, but, but talking about some of the major, the major elements of the bill might be useful.
Okay. So, um, I will definitely get it all typed up in a summary form for you, but just super high, uh, high-level highlights, then. Where I think we're gonna wanna focus on is this is one of those bills that's gonna have significant rulemaking, and I think the, a county engaging in that rulemaking would be very important, especially with the, uh, the terrain and geography that Deschutes has specifically. Yeah, just that would be important. Um, you're gonna have DEQ, um, of the 220 million, you're gonna have 3.3 million go into DEQ. And their main focus is to develop and implement programs related to wildfire smoke, um, on that principle. Uh, there's three main programs that they're gonna be focusing on, um, in that development, and I would, they all three are being cor, should be coordinated, yes. So they are to support local communities, um, counties and cities, um, in detecting and preparing and communicating, uh, the public health impacts of wildfire smoke. You're also, they also have to develop a process to, uh, uh, develop intergovernmental agreements, grants, and contracts to develop, uh, community response plans to enhance readiness, um, for, uh, and capacity for wildfire smoke, um, impact. And then they also have a charge that they need to be sup, uh, supporting communities across Oregon and monitoring, interpreting, and commu-, uh, communicating the data of the air quality. This is, this is not a subject that's going away. Um, it's becoming more and more prevalent across not just bills related to health, uh, the smoke. You're seeing it a lot in the employment bills as well. The ones that didn't pass this year where it was going to require employers to monitor air quality and then have a plan in place for all employees and that, and that fit. Those all were paused because they want this work done first. And so I anticipate there will be future bills coming that were similar that we saw in the session about that. But I do anticipate that they want DEQ to start putting some parameters around programs, see if there's just gaps that rulemaking can fill, um, before they take a, a larger approach through legislation, um, on the private sector. Um, and, and it's not just private sector. Obviously, that would go for the county as well, being an employer. The other important part I thought of this bill is you're going to have $67 million going to the Department of Forestry, and they are going to have very specific tasks. They have to develop a map for wild, a statewide wildfire risk map. They have to design and implement a program to reduce that risk. Um, they're establishing a new program called the Small Wild Woodland Grant Program. They are gonna have rulemaking on what that is going to consist of. Um, they have to, they are going to adopt and modernize rules related to prescribed fires. Um, so that will be something to watch in rulemaking as well. Um, and then they are also to establish and expand systems for automated smoke detection cameras. And so a lot of that fiscal is anticipated to be in the, uh, equipment cost. However, it was noted very well in the paperwork that that is a shoot-from-the-hip dollar number, and it could range from 67 million to mu, to almost double that. Um, and so that might change based off of the recommendations that come back from the agency. But they are definitely trying to increase wildfire smoke, uh, cameras and monitoring. Um, so that might be something that the county might want to weigh in as well and maybe offer recommendations on areas of the county that they would like to see increased monitoring available. Um, and then one thing that I also thought was interesting in this bill is that they are having DHS take the lead, but between DHS and OHA, they are to establish clean air shelter operations and a program so that local governments can have clean air shelters available, and then also have a grant program available for public entities, um, or others to apply to have their filtration systems updated, um, to, uh, mitigate for the impact of wildfire smoke. They will be doing rulemaking on all of those programs as well. Um, the monetization of filtration, uh, for the buildings will be running through OHA on rulemaking. And the safe air, or the healthy air shelters will be running through DHS. Um, I don't know why the decision was made to split between the two. I'm sure there is a good reason there, I just don't know it, and so I apologize. Um, and then the other thing that I thought was, it was interesting that they have this on here. They do, they're doing 12.7 million to HECC, which is the Higher Education Coordinating Commission. Um, this might be something that the county might be interested in being a member of. Uh, they are to establish the wildfire workforce advisory committee, and also the court program, um, and associated grant programs. And so with, for those two new entities. So there will be a robust conversation around this. There will be a robust rulemaking process around it. But if they are looking for participants to sit on these councils, that might be one that the, uh, the county consider or, um, reach out to Ben Cannon, the executive director of HECC, and say, hey, this is of interest to the county. Um, as you move forward with this, please consider us. So that is an option, they're an opportunity I see for the county if you, if it's so, if you so want it. And then I will type up the rest there. The other big, big portion there is just the Oregon State Police Budget. Um, within there is the Fire Marshal's Office. They're getting $125 million, um, to pretty much staff up. Um, they were directed to increase their readiness capacity, and a lot of that is new FTEs. Um, it also establishes a community risk reduction fund and a grant program to administer that, um, to improve community, uh, uh, preparedness. Um, so that might be of interest if we have communities in Deschutes County that after the rulemaking comes out that there's, they need to do adjustments with landscaping or other projects, that this fund might be something that you can apply for to be able to help mitigate the costs to that. And so, um, that is all going to be brand new. It's not existing as of today, and so the rulemaking will be being placed. Um, we have flagged all of these key terms, so as the rulemaking gets published, we can make sure the county's at least aware of it, and we can make a decision at that point if they want to engage. But, uh, I, I just wanted to summarize there, saying there's a few other points I'll put in the email form, but that is probably the bigger robust bill that's going to be taking a lot of interim, interim time, so. And then one last thing, and I said it was my, the other one was my last. I just do wanna just put on your radar, Commissioners, the calendar of what is next. And so in the next big legislative thing moving forward, and I know everyone's kind of burnt out from session already, but again, it, it, Oregon's no longer a part-time legislature. I know it is intact, but it really is year-round now. Um, in September, we know there's gonna be a special session, um, the 20th and 21st. Uh, that will be for redistricting purposes. They have until the 27th to, uh, get a bill passed, uh, Deschutes County. From all conversations on both sides that I have heard, um, Deschutes County's maps and bo, uh, lines are a, a prime focus, um, so that will be something that the county might want to watch or maybe make recommendations on, um-
What was that? I didn't-
County submitting papers to say-
The lines.
Come on.
Because of our population growth. Originally, I was on one of those calls-
Yes.
Talking about, um, reapportionment, and they were trying to say that we were down on our population, and I was like going, where did that number come from, so, yeah.
But what was the words you said specifically? You said, "Deschutes County, something..."
Is a focus, right?
Deschutes County lines are prime focus.
Prime focus, okay, yeah, no, I was just-
Yeah, it'll be a prime focus. And part of that is because of the numbers. I think you look at the rest of rural Oregon, those districts have to come, make up 9,000 to 12,000 more people in their population. And so we know just from the ramifications of those lines adjusting that Deschutes is gonna be adjusted a bit. But I think what's really important, I think, is you're starting to see, um, the conversation of, okay, well, how do you split? You could, you have to be within a less than a percent difference, um, between districts and population. So, uh, you can't just grab one whole community, um, and say, okay, that's now part of this, uh, this district. You have to be within that less than 1% difference from the neighboring, um, legislative districts. And so one of the things we have seen local government say is, hey, we understand this is a difficult process, but if you had to, um, and you're considering mine, it's important to try to keep communities whole. Don't, you know, try to, if you're gonna, you know, split, are there natural boundaries in the county? To look at that. Um, you know, I think just north of you, when they had this conversation 10 years ago, they didn't know where to split Wasco County, and they ended up, the counties actually ended up recommending just use the highway. That's a blur for our voters, it's, you know, and so you see those type of things. That's just something that's on the table. Um, it's, uh, it's a smaller committee, um, and so I think where you see, uh, uh, it's two separate committees in both chambers. But that said, I think that, um, not all of them, all of those members are from Deschutes County. So, um, if there's an opportunity that you folks as Commissioners wanna put out there to, uh, make sure that they're considering, I think it's, uh, duly important. And I know Representative Bonham-
Bonham is on it, isn't it?
And to keep your eyes, and they're part of that as well.
I thought, I thought Senator Knob was part of it.
He could, yes. I don't have the full list in front of me, I'm just shooting from the hip, sorry.
He is.
Um, but yeah, so September is going to be busy on that. In addition to the special session, they are moving forward with three days of legislative days as well. Um, so they will come in on that front end and do special session and end with legislative days. And why I'm saying these legislative days are important is because there is a continued narrative, um, in the last three or four cycles, that if you don't start having conversations in the interim during legislative days, and you get to the full session and you try to introduce a new concept, you could say all you want of, hey, this is, you're going to get pushed back of, this is new, this is something, especially when going into a one-month session, you'll get pushed back to think, well, why wasn't this worked during the interim? And so legislative days has kind of become more of a report, you receive and acknowledge reports and start working on concepts that are going to be, uh, popping up in the next session. So you, I guess you can look at it from two ways. If we want something this next session, we need to start get working it now. And two, um, if you just wanna know what's ideally gonna be part of the agenda next session, just start monitoring those, uh, uh, those committees. Um, but that's all in September, and then I, or, uh, November comes around. They do every other month. Um, you have obviously Election Day, but you have another set of legislative days, an updated revenue forecast, and then the big LC request deadline. And that's the one I really wanna note for you folks. If we need to have a bill sponsored, um, by the 19th of November, that needs to be into Legislative Council for drafting, um, to have a pre-session filed in these next one-month short sessions. Um, they, they, if they will just flat out say, leadership has said it, um, if you don't have a pre-session filed, you're gonna be working uphill both ways to try to get it passed in the one session. And, or there must be, it must be emergency to try to get it to pass. Um, they want the stuff talked about before. And so, um, if there is a, uh, agenda item or a concern that the county really needs to draft in this short session, we know we need to have that, uh, an identified sponsor of the bill and that bill drafted with Legislative Council by the 19th of November. And so, um, just wanted to make sure that you folks were aware of that. And then, uh, the rest I'll put in email as well. Uh, the session will then kick in, uh, February 1st through March 7th of next year. But I will just pause there and, uh, see if there's any questions. Um, uh, obviously I can type this all up in a better, and then I will attach the full kind of, uh, bill report that you're used to, showing where everything will pass or fail.
Uh, Phil, I have a question. I was told there's like $130 million the state has sitting somewhere for mental health, housing, funding, et cetera. And I'm wondering, how do we get a significant portion of that funding over here to Deschutes County for some kind of mental health, housing that we don't have? You know, they were opening up a 48-bed unit-
Yeah.
In Junction City, and, um, we need something here. So how do we get some of that 130 million?
Right. So there's a couple, a couple thoughts I have on that. Yes, there is money out there for those things. Um, there is a significant investment made in behavioral and mental health, um, this session. Uh, what we don't have the answer on yet is, is OHA going to do those through a grant, uh, uh, grant program, through an RFP program? We don't know that yet. We don't know that yet. They, what I can tell you, Commissioner, is actually with my, with the economic summit hat on, is we've made a request for OHA to present and give us that update, give the county commissioners that update. Should county public health offices be preparing for an RFP? Should it, is it going to be just distributed based off of a funding formula in some measure? Please give us that update because it wasn't really spelled out well in the bills. It was allocated but not spelled out. And so ideally, I hope in August we'll have that answered, but I just don't have it for you now, Commissioner, and I apologize.
So that's like a month away, a little over a month away. So hopefully.
Yeah. And I do know they are, they are looking for facilities. One of the big conversations that I feel like legislators or at least no way that means members feel like they're hitting their head against the wall on is how do you get away from this institutional state hospital model where you don't get federal reimbursement? There's, the feds have said that they are moving away from institutional facilities for reimbursement purposes. And so when we put, or we serve folks, Oregonians in a state hospital, if it is over a certain bed count, we don't get federal match for that. If you do it, if you provide those services in like a 16-bed secure residential treatment facility, the feds will reimburse the state for those, sometimes up to, for every $1 we put in, up to $2 to $3, the feds will match it with. So there is an incentive to have these facilities out there into rural communities so folks are in their communities, they're not shipped across the state or for others. I know Ways and Means is trying to have that conversation. I know they are frustrated immensely with an agency that is not moving quick enough for them on that topic. I believe we've seen a couple budget notes come out saying that the agency will report on capacity of such facilities and what is their plan to start moving in that direction. Because I, you want to talk large budget issues, that, that state hospital, it is almost 100% general fund. And so there is a significant portion of dollars that are going towards that that I know Ways and Means isn't happy about. We have open ears to have that conversation. It's just trying to get the wheels moving on it.
Thanks.
I definitely think having Janice track with AOC, MHP is probably, you know, we have, you know, there's, there's focused statewide groups that are, are set up to help with us, help us with these things. So that would be another channel for us to, to keep exploring and trying to figure out how to get some of those funds.
Thank you very much, Phil Schoyer. Do we have a couple more updates in the room or? I think Shannon had something behind you, Nick, too. Solid Waste.
Solid Waste. Chad Centola, interim director for the Department of Solid Waste. Want to give you a summary of SPE 582, which is the Plastics Pollution Recycling Modernization Act. Tim Shimke sat on the advisory board as that was being developed, and I kind of picked his brain earlier this week on, on this. What the, what the bill does is, is kind of upgrades the state's recycling system through a number of efforts. The producers of packaging, paper products, and food service ware will form a group called the Producer Responsibility Organization, and they will fund and facilitate improvements to the recycling system here in Oregon. One of the challenges in Oregon, depending where you live, the commodities that are available for you to recycle vary. Some of it's driven by population in the state. But one of the efforts will be to have a standard list of recyclables statewide. So whether you live in Baker City, Deschutes County, or Portland, you will have the same list of recyclables available to you, and the Producer Responsibility Organization will facilitate and fund some of the challenges that rural communities have with that. You certainly can understand that Burns has challenges moving their recyclable commodities to the producers and processing facilities. Another thing we'll do is expand the, under the direction of local governments, those programs, in particular rural communities. And for us, one of the things I'm intrigued by is our solid waste management plan. One of the focuses is establishing and improving recycling in multifamily units. It's a big challenge everywhere in the United States of facilitating that, and the Producer Recycling Organization will facilitate that. They'll also provide education resources for outreach to members of the public businesses on how to, how to improve their recycling. Also, the processing of recycling materials to be done in facilities that meet new performance standards. They'll do, do work on improving the quality of the materials that are coming out of these recycling processing plants. Be standard reporting with the state of Oregon so that the state is sure that, that the goals of the act are being met. And also provide for paying living wages to people that work at these recycling facilities. And then finally, make sure that there's end markets for these, these materials. There, that certainly is a challenge in some respects on having end markets for commodities that are separated through recycling programs. So for Deschutes County, it will, again, it'll, it'll help meet, meet some of the goals that we established in our solid waste management plan. Once the rulemaking process gets going, we'll have a better understanding of how we'll be able to tap the financial and technical resources after the organization's going to provide through this.
Very good.
Nope, any questions?
So, well, do you have any sense of what that flow of money looks like to, you know, from the Producer Responsibility Organization to rural communities to, to get recyclables to where they need to go to, you know, to be processed?
You know, I think that'll come out in the rulemaking process. I'm at a little bit of a disadvantage. Up until a month and a half ago, I was more on the implementation of the rulemaking side of things. You know, Tim was the one that, that oversaw, you know, the legislative process on things. But when the rulemaking process gets going, there'll be much more detail on how that will happen.
I guess my other question would be, so you mentioned the, the focus or, you know, the additional work on multi, you know, improving recycling in multifamily housing. Do you picture other ways in which this piece of legislation will result in kind of, you know, more recycling opportunity that, that, you know, kind of typical, like your family, you know, household waste producers produce? Or is it really a lot of backend stuff, you know, that, that is helpful for us managing a landfill to, to, you know, up, you know, get more recyclable material to places where it's actually going to be recycled?
No, I think it works on, on both ends. There's certainly going to be an educational component for members of the community for waste minimization. Again, looking at being smart consumers, things like that. So on the front end, making sure that people are doing things at the, at the start to, to reduce the amount of waste going to the landfills. And then on the back end, just the, the financial and technical and educational resources the organization will be providing will help facilitate that.
Exciting.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm kind of excited to see what comes out of this myself here, you know, working on the solid waste management plan. The COVID put a bit of a hold on things, and this, this bill actually kind of delayed us from getting some implementation going. So once things start moving forward on this, I think we'll be seeing some good things coming out of this for the county.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
I see Tom Kuhn on. Are you interested in sharing? I see there's a tobacco licensing bill got passed at the state level.
Yes, I just wanted to chat with you about that tobacco retail licensure Senate Bill 587. While I don't have a tremendous amount of information to update you with, with this as we're still waiting to get more from the state, I just want to kind of cue it up that the next time we come to talk with you about this bill, it will be most likely the conversation whether or not we want to implement it locally or have the state implement it. So that's pretty much the decision the county gets to make, is whether or not they want to be the enforcement agency or they want to allow the state to do it. And we'll get more details, I'm sure, in the next few months on that. But as of right now, my update in the, in the report that I provided is pretty much all we know at this time.
Okay. Great, thank you so much. And then is there anybody else online for us? Okay.
Commissioners, Nick LeLac, Community Development Director. I'll just provide three quick updates. One, there's always a number of minor changes made to the state land use program, and so we'll bring those forward to the Board of Commissioners and housekeeping amendments. Nothing really significant or none that we have identified as priorities coming forward. So that's number one, and I'm happy to answer any questions on that. And there's a great update from the Department of Land Conservation and Development, DLCD, to the Land Conservation and Development Commission, LCDC, next week that identifies what a number of those, of those are, if you're interested in, in any of those updates. That's number one. Number two, a couple of days ago, the Bulletin really issued a very nice article, and I think it was the Bulletin, maybe they carried the Oregonians' article as they often do, but it really summarized a huge number of housing-related bills that, that were passed with a lot of funding, a lot of programs. Obviously, we don't have necessarily housing staff with Deschutes County, but I just think it's important for the Board to be aware of that because it, it does address the needed housing in our county. A lot of those will be directed to cities and state agencies, so a lot to, to address with housing. And then just to answer a question that I think it was Commissioner Chang asked much earlier about whether building, whether single-family dwellings can opt in to bill to the R327 standards. One of the commissioners asked. I did follow up with our building official, Randy Scheid, and he did confirm, people can opt in to those more restrictive building standards today, even before they're required. So we can, we can review plan, plan permits as well as conduct the inspections for people that choose to do that at this point, but they're certainly not required. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Anything else?
No, I think that concludes the legislative update with the dates that Phil provided today. I'll certainly check in with commissioners about next steps as we look forward to the short session and the special session in terms of what our priorities may be looking forward. So certainly we'll continue to engage the Board and departments on those topics. But yeah, thank you to the Board and thank you to staff that supported the legislative process this year, and hopefully it was helpful to the Board.
And I want to tell Dorley Kinjin, if she is on, that we have got to get her bill put together. And I told her, short session, we're going to start now with Representative Zika because he tried to help this last year, you remember? She has like that cottage that she's trying to put together, and I think she is 79. And I promised her we would, we would really work hard on that. So Dorley, be ready. We've got to get together sooner than later. Or they won't even acknowledge it, right? If it's not done by November 20th, I believe, something like that?
I'd love to just make, you know, make an observation or pose a question or two about our process, our legislative process. Is Phil still with us?
Phil Schoyer's phone call still with us?
Okay. Well, you know, one of the things I was going to say is that I feel like PacWest did a really great job of kind of constantly framing the big picture of what's going on in Salem, tracking things for us. But I, I, I do kind of wish that we had more from them in terms of, you know, helping us connect with key legislators or staffers to kind of shape things up or, you know, interaction as bills were being developed. You know, like we could, we could play, I think, a little bit more proactive role in kind of, you know, building the, you know, building the relationships, building the coalitions, you know, shaping the legislative language to get the legislative results that we wanted. And so I, I was, you know, I, I'm, one of the questions I would have loved to ask Phil was, you know, do we actually need to change their scope of work for them to, for them to play that more active role for us? Or, you know, is, do we not budget for enough hours? Or, you know, is it, I mean, or, you know, and I don't know whether, you know, amongst the other two commissioners and the, the, you know, the, the staff leadership of the county, whether people are just, you know, feel like, you know, actually, we feel like it works and, and, you know, like, we could try to do more, but maybe we don't have to. But I, I just wanted to put that out, that I do think that we could be accomplishing more of our legislative goals if we played a more active role in the process. And that would have to be, you know, it would have to be quarterbacked by our lobbyists, in, in my opinion. I mean, there are counties like Clackamas County that have like a, you know, like a public affairs staff position, which, which I don't think we're ready to go to yet, but, you know, that's, that's another model. But short of that, you gotta have, you know, a lobbyist who's quarterbacking that for you. So I just have an interest in us revisiting the, you know, the scope and budget, you know, for, for this work, you know? If not now for the shorts, you know, the, the short session stuff that's, that's coming up. But, you know, definitely for the, before the next big session in 2023.
That kind of reminded me of what it was like before we were on virtual this last year, because they actually did set, I was over there a lot, and Phil was outstanding at introducing me to Pat Allen and all, every key player that I needed to meet with. So I really feel that we lost a lot with the, with being on Zoom and virtual. He couldn't have been better when I, you know, I was, we were over there a lot, and I would always like spend half of my day in, in the Capitol because I thought that's where it was really important, leaving notes on people's desks. So anyway, I, I feel like, you know, hopefully we can go back to, I guess the Capitol's open today, isn't it? And I would hope that, you know, we need to really pay attention to what the registering in September, if we are the prime spot for that. So that's going to be, you know, we're going to get another representative from here.
So that was my experience also. I mean, I said, oh, I need to make a connection, and I made a phone call to Phil Schoyer specifically. He said, okay, we've got an appointment. I think we emailed a confirmation. I walked in the front door of the Capitol. He was standing right there. We went right to the office, and he was in the room with me. So I mean, there is that capacity and capability. So it's just this COVID year's really.
The COVID year was weird. Okay, that's helpful.
It was amazing. Yes. Remember, we got a.
Yeah, so we used to do that.
Right, right.
We had a Johnson the second month, I think I was a commissioner. She was lovely, and it's, those kind of relationships are always good. I know I can send her an email, and, and at least I know she'll briefly look at it. So, yeah, it's really too bad. This last year was not as good as it could have been, but then we were, I think, extremely lucky, or fortunate, getting our two judges and our ADU bill. So hopefully we don't have to wait till '24 for that to go into effect.
But, but I do, like, you know, you know, like, here's one example or one case to, to think about. The Marijuana Revenue Bill. I mean, there are, there are scenarios where we would have had a lobbyist who literally kind of shaped the language of the bill as opposed to, you know, what, what happened was we asked, you know, our legislative, you know, our legislative representatives, like, hey, help us with this, you know, help us make this thing happen. And they just sort of did it the way that they would do it, or they did it the best way that they could, as opposed to, hey, we have, you know, we have this concept, like, and we will, we will craft the bill language for you, and then we want you to carry this for us. So I, and, and if we're kind of, if we're, if we have our, if we have mixed feelings about the results of that, of that legislative process, you know, one way to prevent that from happening is to put more of a stamp on the legislation ourselves, you know, before it goes through the sausage factory.
I think we kind of did that. It was a pretty black and white ask.
I, I don't think so. I don't think we had, I don't, I don't think we, I don't think we proposed the language, and I don't think we had a whole lot of back and forth about the, the language of the bill. And that's, again, you, you need, you need, you need hours, you need the lobbyist hours and.
We had words, we said, okay, this is, we want a shall instead of a will or whatever the concept was. It was pretty clear the ask, and it just, it went into a system, which that's where we could have, you know, had a lobbyist in the system watching what happened, and it came out a very different bill. So, yeah, I mean, I agree on one hand, the fact that we could have had somebody shepherd that a lot closer, but we had set it up. that a lot closer, but we had set it up for a real clear ask, and when it came back, we were told what they were going to do to us.
Okay, well, we, I mean, I, I think we agree, we could have shepherded that more closely and had.
I wouldn't have known that we needed to.
Uh, you know, when, when you're, when you're dealing with legis, there's stuff like, uh, 391 that, you know, affects the whole state and is of, you know, major interest to a lot of people, um, where it's a lot harder to kind of have it come out exactly the way you want it because there's so many people involved. But, I mean, when it's a bill for you, then being more involved along the way can, can ensure that it's closer to what you want at the end.
Good, yeah, well, we'll have many opportunities for legislative discussions.
But it is helpful to understand that, that, uh, uh, in a non-COVID year, you, under the contract that we have, we would have had a much, we would have had much more engagement with the.
In the bill.
The legislators.
Where we wanted to talk to. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, so now, do we have executive session of any sort, anything today? Yeah, I didn't think so, nothing else. Okay, with that, is there anything else, any other items? There's community meeting at 6:30 in, I guess, online for the Fire to the North, and then a meeting at the high school in Lapine at 7 o'clock for the one in the south.
Well, good timing, huh?
Go from there.
I know.
The reports from, the reports from Ed at, at lunchtime sounded good. I mean, it sounded like there was some good progress being made, but who knows what happened in the last three hours?
Yeah.
Well, I just ask, if the wind started, well, it's supposed to start at 3:00.
Yeah.
So that's, and if it's up to 25 miles an hour, that is not a pretty.
Okay, well, with that, and seeing nothing else?
Stay safe.
Eric?
Yes, I have, uh, three items.
He's got three items.
Items, I'll start with the simplest. As a reminder, tomorrow is the Edco Lunch.
Yes.
It, it's virtually or in person. If anybody wants to carpool, um, we're, we can carpool over there, so let me know. Uh, check-in is at 11:00, the program starts at 11:30.
At the River House?
Yes. Second item is, Nick is here to discuss planning commission appointment process.
Oh, yeah.
Give it to him.
Commissioners, this could be relatively brief. We have three applicants. Uh, two are in south, southern Deschutes County. One is in Deschutes River Woods, which does, isn't southern Deschutes County per our code, but it's your choice if you wish to interview all three or just interview the two in southern Deschutes County. Uh, this morning I did receive a letter and resume from, uh, Tony Williams, the second candidate, so we have two complete applications for two, uh, for two candidates. So it's really your choice of, traditionally, uh, when, when commissioner participates, I participate this year, I would include, uh, Peter Gatawski, Planning Manager, and then the Planning Commission Chair, Les Hudson. If that process still works, um, again, it's really up to you if you would wish to, to interview all three or just the two, and then which commissioner would like to serve on the selection committee.
Don't you think Chair DeBonne would want to do that? Because it's, it's his county.
So, uh, yeah, and I support the two at this time, and then I'd offer to be involved with that and come back with a recommendation.
Um, that sounds good procedurally to me. I mean, I'm curious, I'm sorry that I saw that there were some emails from today, but I, I wasn't tracking whether the, the people who had expressed interest earlier were still part in the mix, or whether these are new applicants or?
Good question. So initially there were two applicants. One of them has continued, the other one has moved out of the region, and so we have , uh, two new candidates, one of whom, uh, lives in southern Deschutes County.
Yeah, so let's proceed with two, and I'll be involved.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, what else?
All right, the last item I had is, uh, Commissioner Chang is, is assigned to the Emergency Homeless Task Force, and Tom and I are also involved, as is Molly Wells-Darling and Colleen Thomas. Um, there's a, there was a discussion with the city of Bend about having a facilitator for that group, and, uh, the city of Bend is interested in, in splitting the cost of having a facilitator who has background in homelessness and houselessness issues, uh, in discussions with, with, uh, staff and the two co-chairs, including Commissioner Chang. Um, it's recommended that, that we, we do that. It would be a cost to the county of about $5,000. Uh, the county could use ARP funds or another funding source. So we just kind of wanted to check in with the board on that.
So how big of a group is it, or what? Or is this, has there been a smaller group, and it's going to get to be a bigger group?
Uh, I mean, the, the planning group was literally just a couple county staff, a couple city staff, and the counselor and the commissioner. And then now that the group has launched, there's, it's basically a, a panel of, um, service, homeless service providers. You know, that, that's some of the usual suspects, some of the usual suspects, the, you know, the neighbor impacts, the Bethlehem Inns, the, you know, and, and people like that. It's, uh, Mosaic Medical, I'm, I'm, I'm forgetting who all.
Bethlehem Inn, we have our staff from Behavioral Health.
I feel like it's about maybe 10 or 12 people. Um, and, uh, two, two, two questions or clarifications. I, I thought, I thought, uh, or the last I heard Eric King was thinking maybe the total contract would be 20K, and, and they were asking us for 10, but, or did you, you heard 10K total, or?
I heard 10, 10K total.
Okay.
I mean, then there's an option of doing additional work possibly after the.
This is for one meeting a month?
Uh, this would be.
Six meetings and, uh, six, or five, I guess there's five meetings left, but, uh, five meetings, um, and, uh, the, the city was really interested in having, you know, basically bringing, uh, bringing to this, you know, someone with expertise in, in, you know, homelessness and, you know, homeless service provision, and, you know, like, how other communities have, you know, fixed their, their homeless crisis, or, you know, what they've done. Um, because I, you know, that, that was my question was, you know, do we need, do you want just a facilitator? Um, yeah, because if so, uh, these are generally pretty nice people, um, and there's, I don't detect a whole lot of tension in the group. Um, or do we need someone who's going to bring us ideas and bring us, you know, kind of frameworks, uh, and, and examples from other places? And, and the city had an interest in the, in that, that, that second scenario, um, so not just a facilitator, but, but someone who's actually going to help us kind of, you know, essentially craft a plan. Um, and, you know, and.
I'm supportive. I, I mean, I want to make sure that we're going down the path of how do we reduce this, uh, you know, issue in, in our community as in, you know, finding safe housing and employment opportunities, supportive housing if need be, uh, not spin up the industry around managing this for a long period of time. And I, I say that in context of the, I got to go back and look at it, but the 10-year plan to end homelessness was about, published about 11 or 12 years ago, and I just, it'd be interesting to read what that says now, uh, because it's way out of control at this time.
Yes, I would say that's an understatement. So, okay, so we're going to match them for 5,000.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, anything else?
Not for me.
Thanks for holding on to that all day.
5,000 a meeting, oh, right.
Yeah, well, with that, uh, meeting adjourned.